I don't know. How long all those things? And those shakes. I want the stomach.
Hmm? Bring it in.
What do you?
Yeah, something.
Something.
What was he saying?
Oh.
Just circle.
Yeah.
Do it.
Um, who was it? Or Chris, can you turn your microphone?
Check, check. Hello, hello?
Okay, so we can resume.
All right, it looks like we have resolved the technical difficulties. I'm hearing there might be some issues with accessing the Wi-Fi, but that's not having any impact there, Sam?
No, no.
Okay. Okay, so let's go ahead and continue where we left off, which was new and noteworthy from the library. And we have Christopher Veatch, our librarian, with us. Welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm Christopher Veatch, county librarian, and thank you for giving me just a few minutes to talk about what's new and noteworthy at the library. This month, I wanted to highlight a book that's been at the top of the library's hold list since it came out this November, The Gray Wolf by Louise Penny. Louise Penny is a bestselling author from Canada with a long-running mystery series following Inspector Armand Gamache in the small town of Three Pines. And The Gray Wolf is the 19th installment of the series. And one of the reasons people love this series is that the small town of Three Pines is a character of its own. It has a cozy, welcoming atmosphere, offering a comforting escape, perfectly balanced by the suspense of a gripping mystery. Lisa Holstein writes for Library Journal, Penny plays on readers' fears as she launches a new story arc that is completed in this installment but presents a cliffhanger. It's a frightening novel of duality, of good versus evil, with an
Looks like we've altogether lost. Uh, he's back.
Hello, sorry, I'm not sure what happened. I just disappeared. So I was talking about The Gray Wolf?
Yes.
Um, I'm not sure where I got cut off exactly, but
You were, you were mentioning the quote from the, I don't know if it was the New York Times or one of the quotes for the reviews.
Okay, it's from Library Journal. They, they write, "It's a frightening novel of duality, of good versus evil, with an allegorical tale for today's world as only Penny can write." And The Gray Wolf is available in print, large-type audiobook and ebook through the library system. And you can request this book or other materials through our online library catalog. Um, requesting items is completely free, and items are sent to your local branch for you to pick up. I'm also excited to introduce The Palace Project this week, which is an app that lets patrons access even more ebooks and audiobooks from the library. Palace combines more of the library's digital collections into one seamless platform. The Palace Project app is available for free download on mobile devices and tablets through Apple App Store or Google Play. All you need is your library card to start, and you can explore thousands of titles, including over 3,300 always-available audiobooks that are provided through the California State Library's eBooks for all projects. So with those, there's no waiting. You can download those audiobooks right away, which is great for a road trip or, um, you know, anything that you're doing that would benefit from an audiobook. So you can find that information about The Palace Project or our library catalog on our website at library.lakcountysea.gov, or come visit your local library branch in Lakeport, Clear Lake, Middletown, Upper Lake, or on the Bookmobile. Thanks again for listening to what's new and noteworthy at the library.
And Mr. Veatch, I always appreciate you updating the public and the board on what's going on in your library system. I, I want to let you know of something that myself and Jessica Paeska, Supervisor Paeska, um, experienced. Greg Lucas, I believe is his name, who is the state librarian, gave a keynote speech about the importance of libraries, but a very dynamic speaker, an amazing speech that he gave, very inspiring, and I, I'm happy to know that you have higher levels of support. And I know that's why you're doing such a good job in your, um, in your capacity as our librarian, and appreciate the fact that all are working together to make this a better place.
I'm so glad to hear that. Greg Lucas is a wonderful state librarian, and I'm always happy to work with them.
Thank you so much.
So he did talk about his tour. Did he come to any of our libraries?
He came to the Upper Lake Library.
Nice, excellent.
When he first became state librarian.
Very nice. Thank you again. All right, next on our agenda, consideration of the September 30th, 2024 report of Lake County pooled investments. And we have Mr. Sullivan, our treasure tax collector, and Carlos. Sorry, I only have the first name.
It's all right. It's hard to pronounce.
Welcome.
Thank you. Patrick Sullivan, treasure tax collector. I'm here with Carlos Oblidos from Chandler Asset Management. We're going to present
Please turn on the mic. Should go green.
Oh. So Patrick Sullivan, treasure tax collector. I'm here with Carlos Oblidos from Chandler Asset Management. We are here to present the September 30th report on investments. And at this point, I would turn it over to Carlos for the presentation.
So as the materials get pulled up, supervisors, it's a great, uh, it's great to see you again. Happy holidays to everybody. I, I'm going to keep it brief because you're probably running behind schedule. I think that if we have the presentation up, I think it might be best to, um, before we jump in, just start by saying that the size of your total overall investment program, just as a reminder, let's go back to the ABCs. The size as of September 30th was $520.4 million. This includes everything. It includes two portfolios that are managed by Chandler Asset Management and a host of cash management investments spread out amongst investment pools, money markets, money market mutual funds, bank accounts, and savings accounts. All of it functioning in conjunction with one another to, again, provide liquidity to pool participants when they need it, to ensure that the investments are safe, and of course, to generate a competitive return. So the total amount is $520 million. Of that $520 million, $77.6 million as of September 30th is in those liquidity vehicles. That's not managed by Chandler, but it is managed directly by your treasury and your treasure tax collector. And then Chandler handles two portfolios. What the portfolio that we call a core or longer-term portfolio, about $375 million, and then a smaller liquidity portfolio that we've been managing as an alternative to the state pool. That one titles about $67.6 million for a total of $442. So of that $520, we're managing about $442 million on your behalf. So I want to focus on that longer-term core portfolio. And if we turn to page number 16, I want to show you what, what it looks like. A reminder, when we set up the strategy for this portfolio, the main strategy was to maintain the investments between primarily one and three years. We go a little longer sometimes, a little shorter. But sometimes, uh, whether we do that or not, the bulk of the investments stay between one and three years. They average somewhere around 1.7, 1.8 years. That's important. That strategy has been done because we get a level of expectation for the volatility of returns when we do that. And we also get a level of expectation for the kind of return we're going to get over the long haul. That approach for those $375 million that you see up there, as of September 30th, the yield of maturity, or rather, the income that you are expected to earn on an annualized basis into the future was 3.51, a little bit higher than what you saw the prior quarter. But I want you to look at the market yield, which is the right below, right beneath that. The market yield on this portfolio is 408. It infers a reinvestment rate, which means that we're still picking up some very robust yields. That is also down from the prior three months because interest rates in the markets have come down. The Federal Reserve has lowered interest rates. That number, that reinvestment that's inferred, was in the tune of about 5.02. So you can see that we're reinvesting approximately 100 basis points, 1% lower than we were three, three months ago. And that's simply because of what the Fed has been up to in, in lowering interest rates. This portfolio is very, uh, has a very, very high credit quality. And as I stated, it averages about 1.7 years. If we go to the next page, on page 17, the backbone of this portfolio is the diversification that we've introduced. We try to take advantage of every asset class that's available to us under California government code. Treasury and agency securities, these are obligations from the United States government and its federal agencies. That continues to be the backbone of all of this because those are considered the, the most liquid and generally the safest investments. But we add yield-advantaged sectors to the portfolio to add yield over the long run, and we diversify those. And that's a dynamic approach. So for example, through September 30th, treasuries made up about 33, about a third of the portfolio, 33%, almost 34%. Federal agencies made up a little bit over a quarter of the portfolio, 26%. High-credit-quality corporate bonds make, make up around 24, a little bit less than a quarter. The results of that can be seen on page number 20. Over the past 12 months ended September 30th, the return on this portfolio, so this is a combination of interest income that was earned during the last 12 months, and also the change in fair value of the investments. When you combine them together, we get a total return of 6.96%. You did really well. We haven't seen returns like this in 15 years. Very, very good return. Versus the benchmark, which we use to gauge the amount of, of risk that we're taking on in the portfolio. And we also use that to measure how our returns are doing versus the market. Well, the return on, on, on the benchmark was 6.74. So you, you outperformed it. Why is that? Primarily because of the diversification that you had in the portfolio. You have asset classes in there that were not present in, in the benchmark, which added to the return. Since we've been managing this particular portfolio that goes back to November 1st of 2021, that was in, that was like in the, in the heart of the pandemic when rates were zero, literally. You've been averaging 2.15 per year versus the benchmark of 148. Over the last two years, you've been averaging, and that's per year, 2.15 per year. Over the last two years, you've been averaging a little bit over 5% per year. So you, you've done all right. The shorter portfolio, that's the, the liquidity portfolio. I mentioned that we manage that as an alternative to the state pool that was done on a temporary basis because there was an inversion of the yield curve. That's a fancy term for saying that there was an anomaly in, in the term structure of interest rates where you could earn more with shorter investments than you could with the longer. That's usually not the case. We did this tactically in conjunction with, with, with your treasurer. We, we moved approximately 67, the treasurer moved over approximately 67, actually, at one point, it was closer to $75 million into the shorter-term portfolio. We, we really didn't get much longer than three to six months on average. That portfolio focused primarily on US treasury securities, so we kept it very clean with the safest and most liquid investment. That portfolio, if we turn to page number 25, we can see the return over the last 12 months ended up being 5.46, another strong return for virtually almost overnight cash. So you did, you did, you did well here. Since we began that, that's been running since April 1st of 2023, so a little bit longer than a year, about a year and a half. You've been averaging an annualized return of 5.4. All right, the key things that are driving all of this, I think it's, it's worth saying, is that the economy is slowing down. The reason the economy is slowing down is because we've had high interest rates. The Federal Reserve raised interest rates, and we can actually see that on page number 12, the chart on the right-hand side. We, we, we saw the Federal Reserve raise the overnight lending rate between banks to basically make it more expensive to bank, for banks to borrow from one another, which in turn, the banks make it more expensive for you to borrow from them. And it's, it's, it's more expensive to borrow money today than it was three years ago. And they do that to basically cut people out of the markets to, to, when, for example, when you're a homeowner or, or a home buyer, I should say, you're, you're somebody who wants to invest in a home, and you want to borrow money to, to buy that house. Well, if, if the mortgage rate is much higher, that might make you not be able to afford that mortgage payment. So you probably sit and wait and hold your money. And while you sit and wait and hold your money, you're not demanding that house, which hopefully brings the price down. And that's what they were trying to do. They were trying to bring overall prices down. That's inflation. There's a chart on that, uh, which I do want to highlight. That can be found on page number, it's number six. And you can see the Consumer Price Index in June of, or in, uh, summer, June of 2022, reached a 40-year-high, over 9%. They wanted to bring that back down, and that's what they've done. They've been fairly successful. They did that by raising interest rates. And, um, and now that we're at a point where inflation is lower and, uh, and the Federal Reserve has maintained interest rates high, the economy has slowed down as a result of that. And now they're doing the opposite. Now they're trying to stimulate the economy to make sure that they give enough stimulus to allow the economy to pick back up, but not to bottom out, okay? They don't want it to bottom out and maybe go into a contraction. So as a result, now they've reversed. If we go back to that chart on page number 12 on the right-hand side, if you, if you just look at the far right-hand side, you see the, the hike, which is when they, when, when they raised rates. It looks like a hockey stick, and then they stayed high for a while. And now you see it starting to come down. And that's what they've done. They met in September. They lowered that overnight lending rate between banks by half a percent, 50 basis points. They met again November 7th and lowered that rate once again by 25 basis points, a quarter point. They will be meeting on September 17th and 18th, or December 17th and 18th, in about a week. And, uh, and it is expected, though not guaranteed, that they may lower rates yet again. And as we enter into 2025, they are on an easing mode, meaning that they're more want to lower rates than to raise them, simply because they want to make sure that the economy doesn't, doesn't, uh, doesn't bottom out. So what does it mean for you? It means that for you, your reinvestments, when they raised rates, hit some really high yields, which have benefited you, which have benefited the participants of the pool. Your apportionments have been at the highest you've seen in, in many, many years. You won't see them as high as they've, as they've been. You, you hit some real high highs. You won't see those coming into next year, although you should still see robust yields, which should still be a significant revenue source for the county and the pool participants. Through this time, we'll continue to navigate. We'll continue to coordinate with the treasure tax collector. That component that the treasure tax collector manages directly, that, that was done tactically to capture some very high yields in that anomaly that I talked about. That's been very successful for the pool, very, very successful. The utility of that is, is now waning. And like I said, we continue to coordinate with the treasure tax collector to make sure that when that inflection point comes, that we've already shifted into a new, a new tactic to be able to maintain safety, liquidity, and return. With that, I'll take any questions? You may have.
Supervisor Paeska?
So, so then we won't see as many gains, but we will see a leveling off. We weren't, we're not anticipating any drops, just to be clear.
Correct. Let me, let me take it real technical. You, your, your return comes from two sources. It comes from the interest income that you earn. A bond is a loan, and you're lending money out to these entities. When you buy a treasury bond, you're, you're lending to Uncle Sam. Uncle Sam pays you interest. So, so interest is part of your return. The promise of that return plus your, the return of your principal, because you, it's a loan, you get your money back, the value of that stream of cash coming back to you, it, it has something called a present value, and that value goes up and down in the market. So that's the other part of your return. When I think of the word gain, I think of that change in fair value. But I, I think what you're referring to is the net amount that we're going to end up with, it's not going to bottom out, no. That's not what we're foreseeing. We, we think it might be a little lower than what you had this year, but it's still going to be robust.
I'm just talking about the graph that we all love and what that will look like maybe next year and the year after.
I think it'll look, I think it'll look competitive.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Sullivan, did you want to add something before?
Yeah, if, if you don't mind, I can run through the two remaining charts, and then we can circle back. So this is the quarterly earnings for the pool since we began the comprehensive investment program. So as you can see, we're continuing to, you know, have these gains each quarter. This last quarter, and there may have been an error in the memo. It was the quarter ending September 30th, Q1. That was 5.3 million in returns. So yeah, I think what we're, what we're seeing, and I think what Carlos was talking about, I just want to make it clear is that, that the income at this point, as we have bonds and other instruments continue to mature, we're no longer picking up the huge gains in returns that we were. Each time there's maturity, we were investing at, like you was pointing out, the 5% level or higher in some cases. Our pools have dropped. Our return on our money market has dropped. So at least on the treasury side and the more liquid side, those are starting to really level out or in some cases, decrease as our other maturities come due. Some of them, those older notes that we held at those lower rates, they are being reinvested at a higher rate. But in previous, last year, they would have been reinvested at 5%. Now they're going to be reinvested more in that four, four, three and a half range. So we're, basically, the gains we're picking up on these notes, some of them are still in the 1% to 2% range or even less. So it's going to go up, but it's no longer going to go up even on those in the way that you saw in this last year. So if anything, if there's any more gains to be had, it's going to be pretty, pretty slim. Otherwise, I, I mean, at least from the perspective that I'm seeing, I think by the end of next year, if rates don't change, we're really going to have leveled off. Okay. So there's this chart. And then also, just for your awareness, I think it's too much to really go through here. But this is historical apportionment, apportionment data that your board has requested in the past. This also goes back to 2021. This shows the per-fund breakdown of how the investment earnings for the county from the treasury pool were apportioned. So just if you look at the first one, for example, general fund, so it was like $288,000 in 2021. For 2024, it's $3.4 million. If you go to the final page, you'll just see that total breakdown of interest earned back to '21, and you can see the trends and changes there. And it may just be of some value for what some of the questions your board had to understand how these investment earnings impact not just the county, but also the school districts, fire districts, and all of our partners throughout the county. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to take them.
I see no questions or comments. I appreciate you providing the level of detail. And hopefully, now it's a simple report to run, so it's not something that you have to do from scratch as you had to in the original time that you brought that to us. But seeing that change and making it very public as to all the different agencies and what they're benefiting from this, seeing us start from about $86, $90,000 per quarter, going all the way up to 5.3, 5.4, we're looking at 60 times the level of investment return that we were getting on a quarterly basis. So that's pretty awesome. I don't know what other word to use other than it's really fantastic. I know that we also just, in our consent agenda, just approved, no changes to the policy. And it sounds to me, based on the words that you expressed, that our policy is working for us better than it may be working for others as we're looking at kind of the state average and we're looking at, or what your, I forget what the term was that you used. I don't have, uh, but basically like your, your standard of what you expected for the percentage gain, and we seem to be above that. And part of that could be what's built into the policy because we have certain limitations on what, where we can invest and where we can't invest. So I don't have questions necessarily about the policy because it seems to be working very well for us. But is there a point in your, um, in your duties where you come to us saying, something's wrong with your policy? Others are doing 5%. You seem to be dropping down to 2%. If we changed it and were able to invest into these specific criteria of investments, we would do a whole lot better for you rather than waiting on an annual basis? Just kind of wondering what the future might look like because everything's changing at all times, right?
Yes, I can answer that question. The, the policy, as you stated, is robust. And, uh, and we, when we launched this investment program, there were a lot of, uh, it was a very collaborative approach to make it robust, if you remember. And there was quite a bit of education on the investment side to understand what we were adding to the policy. I would tell you that the policy is robust because, for, for, for two, for three reasons. Number one, because it expanded the asset types that you're allowed to purchase that are allowed by California government code. Prior policies did not do that. So that, that was one major shift which put you in this territory. You're not just earning more money because of that. You also are earning higher money. We can't take all the credit. Interest rates are much higher today than they were when we started. But the policy allowed you to capture those in a diversified manner. The second reason the policy is robust is because it, it follows code. It, it was, it was a concerted effort to make sure that whatever parameters we put in there, they did not violate California government code. Code severely restricts what you're able to do. The third reason your policy is robust is because it includes best practices that we've included in there based on the different industry groups that are out there, our 36 years of experience that we've had managing money, all, all the things that we've seen. They're all in there. So they're, they're designed to kind of keep you safe, to protect you because there's a lot that you can do that can, that can really do damage to the portfolio. Your question was, at what stage do we come back and say, do we change the policy? I would say that the policy at this stage, the changes that would come about wouldn't necessarily catapult you into another new level of earnings. That's, that, that's already been done. At this stage, the changes are more, if we're observing trends in best practices that shift that we think are good to adopt, or if there's a change in California government code. And indeed, we communicate pretty regularly on changes that are coming. We just had one for this year. Senate Bill 882 just did a reclassification of agency, federal agency, mortgage-backed securities can be treated as federal agencies. It was a gray area of California government code. Code clarified that. The good news is that you are already interpreting it that, that way in your portfolio. No change needed. But those are the types of changes that we would anticipate, none that would maybe catapult or change the earnings profile of what you're doing.
And I appreciate where we've started, and I don't anticipate we will ever go back to the 80 or 90 with this level of policy. I think that investment is always going to be a bit of a roller coaster ride, but I don't anticipate to drop in the same way from where we started. I, I'm looking forward to looking at the overall trends after years of continuing to follow the same policy. So thank you so much. All good news. Every time you show up, there seems to be good news. So let's, let's try to keep that trend going.
We'll, we'll keep working on that.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, um, uh, probably my last investment pool report. And so I'm, I'm going off the board as a supervisor assignment. And I just want to take this opportunity to thank you. I don't think I'm any smarter after listening to your reports, but I feel smarter. And that's the important part, I think. I mean, I, I almost thought like, do you have a podcast? I want to follow you. So I'm not going to follow the board meetings verbatim after January, but I appreciate so much the granular detail you bring to this, but also the enthusiasm. And I think you've been a great asset, along with our treasure tax collector, And I think you've been a great asset, along with our treasurer, tax collector, in shepherding us toward financial stability and, and growth for us and our partners. But that's just it. Thank you. I appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you, Supervisor Green. It's been a delight to work with you.
All right, let's go ahead and open up for any public comments regarding this item. Please come up to the microphone, raise your hand, and Zoom.
Michael Wagner. Thank you, everybody, for being here today. I actually just had a question, so I could maybe understand, make sure I, I totally understand what's, what we're looking at. The two portfolios that are handled by Chandler, you guys had some graphs of that from June to September? Is that right? You know, we were flipping through those things so fast, I could hardly keep track of it. Would you mind pulling it up for me? There was one for $400,000.
What was the question that you had for this?
I was just trying to take a look at what the, between June to September, what our changes were. Is that okay with you guys?
And, and it's on our website. It's there, it's, the attachments are all there. If you just wanted to review, you have access to that.
Okay, you guys had a, you guys had a, a chart that showed from June to September, and it had the full amounts, you know, the starting and, and ending amounts?
And just trying to figure out what your question is regarding those amounts.
I was just trying to see if, if I'm following correctly. I'm not sure if I have a question. I just wanted to see what the beginning in June to right now or September's amounts were in the two portfolios.
Okay.
As we were going through them.
And, and like I said, I, I just don't want you to control what staff is, is going to show on the, on the, on the screen when it's available to you to look at and if you have further questions, because this is not a...
I, I'm not trying to control.
No, but you're, you're asking to bring up something, but if you don't have a question, it's available, you can look at it. If you have a question, let's get the question and...
So my question, until it went off into obliterating, right there was, there, if, if I could see the full amounts of what I'd started at to what it is now, it just looks like from June to September, there was a substantial loss. And I was wondering if he would be willing to help us understand what was going on in the markets that would affect that.
Thank you for the question.
So what, I think what you're referring to is the total market value at the bottom where...
Correct.
I think what you're referring to is the total market value at the bottom, which is the market value of the portfolio, including accrued interest, which is interest that you've earned to that point but not yet received. It's, it's attributed to you, but it's, it just hasn't hit your account yet. That is not a loss. This program, also this, the change in value there is, is, is due to a withdrawal that we had. There's, there's dynamic withdrawals that happen periodically out of this portfolio. So there's, not only is the portfolio balance moving around because of an increase in value from investment activity, but there's also money being pulled out to pay for things. Participants sometimes, it's a pool, so there's more people in the county, than the county in the pool. So there are participants which have liquidity needs, that they'll have to pull money out of that pool to make payments for their obligations. Right now, the opposite is happening. We have a run-up to, to December 10th, which is today, where people are paying their property taxes. So there's a lot of money coming in, and that money may flow into any number of these places. Typically, it'll flow to the liquidity vehicles that I spoke about that the treasury manages directly, but some of that may get shifted to the longer portfolios. The intent of the portfolios is that you have money that generally isn't needed, but sometimes it is needed. And, and, and the county will pull money out of there. So that wasn't an actual loss. The portfolio actually grew for, for that three-month period, the portfolio actually grew for that three-month period, 2.77% from investment activity. There was just a shift because people pulled money out.
Mr. I appreciate the clarification.
If, at this moment in time, if you want to meet with Mr. Sullivan to continue the question, at this point, we're, we're done with the conversation. If you want to go back and forth, please make sure to talk with Mr. Sullivan, and Carlos may be around as well. Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, and I'm trying to stay on time for some of our other items that we're already behind on, especially with some of the issues that we've had to deal with. I think, I'll bring it back to the board. If there's nothing further, thank you very much for your time. Thank you for the good news. Let's, oh...
Move to accept.
Oh, yes.
Still moved.
We have a motion and a second to approve the report. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, 6.5, our 9:15 a.m. item, consideration of the Lake County Fire Protection District Community Wildfire Protection Plan. And so I'm going to ask Ms. Lockston to please come up. It has my name on there. We both received an email from Chief Sepeda, wanted to make sure that we had this on our agenda to review and support and adding it to the overall Lake County Community Wildfire Protection Plan. And so I want to introduce Terry Lockston and Chief Sepeda and let you take the lead.
Great, thank you so much. As you know, with the passage of the Healthy Forest Restoration Act in 2003, the U.S. Forest Service and the Bureau of Land Management were given incentives to consider the priorities of local communities as they develop and implement forest management and hazardous fuel reduction projects. Projects and priorities are then outlined in local wildfire protection plans, or CWPPs. These are a means of bringing local solutions to wildland fire management. And in Lake County, with about 645 square miles of government-owned land, and much of it is forested, having CWPPs for these projects are vital. And in developing and implementing CWPPs, communities assume leadership roles in reducing wildfire risk on federal and non-federal land, but particularly in what is called the WUI, or the Wildland Urban Interface. And in Lake County, that's where most populations are centered. The WUI designation map in the county CWPP was approved by the Lake County Fire Chiefs Association in April of this year. And so having an approved and adopted CWPP allows agencies and organizations to apply for funding opportunities that are outlined in the CWPP. For instance, because the county has a CWPP adopted and approved, it allowed Clerk, the Clear Lake Environmental Research Center, and TARA, the Tribal Eco-Restoration Alliance, through the Lake County Resource Conservation District, to receive funds to complete projects in the CWPP, bringing over $20 million of federal funding to Lake County, employing Lake County contractors and people. And so while the county of Lake has an approved CWPP, this doesn't preclude smaller hyper-local communities and smaller divisions of the county to create their own, which is more reflective of their own smaller community. This is why the Lake County Fire Protection District draft CWPP is before you today for approval and adoption. In the future, other smaller divisions of the county may come before your board. For instance, both the Canokti Fire Safe Council and the Seagull Springs Community Redevelopment Association are also in process of creating hyper-local CWPP. Seagull Springs Community Redevelopment Association actually received grant funding to create their own for the Cobb area because the county had the CWPP in place. And so in discussion with agencies and organizations such as the Lake County Fire Protection District creating the, these local CWPPs, they agreed to have them become new appendices in the county wildfire protection plan. And so therefore, in addition to considering approval of the Lake County Fire Protection District CWPP, your board is also asked to consider accepting it as an appendix to the county plan. Thank you. Chief Sepeda?
Hi, Chief Sepeda. So in looking at the county CWPP, it was encouraged for us to have kind of our own to delve down into the inner working parts. And then since 2012, my district has endured a great deal of wildfires, property loss, and, and even a fatality related to one of those. So we carved ours out and then identified specific geographical locations that were based upon life safety, evacuation, property, critical infrastructure, and environmental impact. And then what my fire marshal had done is identify the scope of work, so it can give really anybody that is going to be doing that job specifics of what's going to be done, but it also gives you an end result. So what we hope to do is to take some of the dynamic programming out there. We want to do a couple of them manually and see if we come up with the same results as the dynamic computer programming that does. So I appreciate your support. There's a lot of work to be done. We did have a kickoff meeting for potential Fire Safe Council in the Lower Lake, Clorlake area. Clerk has already done a tremendous amount of work on projects in that CWPP before we even move forward with our own. And that's that Point Lakeview Corridor, Anderson Road, Panoramic, Sunrise Shore. So appreciate the, the support from you folks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just super quick on the recommended action. So this is a district CWPP, but we're here today requesting approval by this board. So that confused me just a little bit. I assume your district can approve its own plans. Action to make this plan an appendix of our county plan, that may require some action. But can you just explain the authority, why this is a recommended action that includes approval by this board of the plan that this district created?
Certainly, that's a great question. We actually got clarification from the United States Forest Service, who is the organization with the authority to administer CWPPs, to have local communities do it. And so Lake County Fire Protection District is both in the county of Lake and the city of Clear Lake, so both of those jurisdictions will have to approve the plan.
And I think it, it allows others to have access to the CWPP, to be able to help and get funding to do the work within the CWPP. And I think one of the first three items, within those first three items, is the working to create a Fire Safe Council. So as you stated, things are already moving forward to check some of those items off. And there are some very important areas within the CWPP project scope that we know are continuously being threatened by wildfires, absolutely within the WUI and all, all sorts of things. So this is needed so that we can be up to date and looking forward to getting this approved. And if there's nothing further, let's open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? I see no movement in the chamber, no hands in Zoom room. Bringing it back to the board for action.
Move to approve the Lake County Fire Protection District's Community Wildfire Protection Plan and authorize the chair to sign.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Part B.
Move to accept the Lake County Fire Protection District's Community Wildfire Prevention Plan as an appendix of the Lake County Community Wildfire Protection Plan. And authorize...
Second.
Nope.
Sorry.
We don't need to authorize any signatures on this one, right?
Already signed.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for bringing this to us. And I want to say, Ms. Lockston, you're the one who put this on the agenda, has my name on it. I want to make sure and say thank you very much for helping out.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep. We are going to move on to our 9:30 a.m. item, presentation of the 2023 Crop and Livestock Report. And we have our ag commissioner, Commissioner Vanderwal. Good morning. I always get excited about the crop report, and this is a good one this year.
Good morning, Chairman Sabatia and board.
Good morning.
Catherine Vanderwal, Agricultural Commissioner. So thank you for your time this morning. I'm going to present to you the 2023 Crop and Livestock Report. Before I get started this morning, I would really like to thank my staff, who helped compile the information and gather it, make all the phone calls, send out all the survey requests and all that other fun stuff, as well as all the producers who contributed their information to make this report a success. So what is the purpose of this report? Why do we do this every year? This report is mandated by the California Food and Agricultural Code, so the report is used for a variety of purposes, including ranchers and growers for planning future production, suppliers for allocating resources, financial institutions, research and education agencies, regulatory agencies, transportation agencies for fuel and other needs, estimating labor needs. And the, and the report can also be used by, excuse me, the report can also be used for animal-related health and disease programs. So the estimated gross production value for 2023 was approximately $140 million. So this is a 31% increase from 2022, and is also a new record for the county. So this surpasses the previous record set in 2017. So something I started last year and kind of continued with the trend this year, taking a look back at 50 years ago, what did the landscape of agriculture look like in Lake County? So you can kind of see some of our top commodities there, the acreage, with the exception of cattle and calves, which is represented by the number of head. So pears, we had about 7,000 acres. Wine grapes were just getting started in the county at 472 acres. We had a large walnut production at 9,000 acres. Our field and seed crops, so that would be hay, pasture, other types of crops like that, at 186,000 acres, and close to 8,000 head of cattle. So fast forward to 2023, you can see there's a decrease in our pear acreage. Wine grapes has increased significantly. We also see a decrease in our walnuts. Our field and seed crops are about halved, and our cattle and calves, the number of head have also dropped significantly. And this is just like a nice little comparison chart with 1973 represented, oh my goodness, not, not 1793, 1973. Yes, correction there. Represented in the blue and 2023 represented in the orange. So it just kind of shows the shift in how things have gone. And then 20-year gross value comparison, so you kind of see the ebbs and flows. Crops fluctuate, markets fluctuate. And again, in 2023, that's our new record. The previous record was 2017, which is, what is that, salmon-colored?
At about 120-something million.
Correct, yeah. Just another chart, gross values of our different commodities. You can kind of see the shift from 2023 in blue compared to 2022 in orange. So you can see the increases in livestock and poultry, as well as fruit and nuts. So our top five commodities for 2023. So our wine grapes remain number one. I'm not sure how many number of years in a row, but pretty consistent. Pears at number two, cattle and calves, this shifted from last year from being number four to number three and, yeah, number three in 2023. Field and seed crops moved down to number four, and our miscellaneous livestock remains at number five. So cannabis production, this is the second year that the cannabis is included in the crop report. So I just have, I think 2022, it was reported in square footage, and then there was a request to convert that into acres, so that's what we did. So I do not have values associated with this. We just did not get enough survey responses to represent the industry as a whole. So we will continue to reach out to producers to see if we can get that information, to hopefully someday include the values in the crop report. Is there any questions?
Supervisor Paeska.
So, and I apologize, I did not ask this of you this week, but we did have a conversation six months or last, last winter about it. In the past, I, was it 2018 that, or 2019, there was a comprehensive economic...
2017, there was.
2017, okay. On agriculture for our county. And we had had that conversation that maybe we should update that and take a new look at that since so much has changed. So I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that, or even how much work is involved with that. But that is something that I would like to see again updated, so that we can have that for our awareness.
Sure. That's actually something I would like to see updated also.
Okay, good.
Yes.
And then we also know that wine grape acreage is decreasing, and it's already begun here. It's, it's starting, it's statewide. We do know that there's reductions here this year and probably likely more coming too. And it's just the realities of the industry. So I don't know if you have anything to add about that either.
Not much. I do know we have some vineyards here who are removing acreage, so that will be reflected. Because I think that some of them have already started pulling acres. So we're still in 2024 right now, so that will be reflected in the 24 crop report. So I think, you know, the values and the trends are going to look a little bit different for 24.
Okay, thanks.
And I would expect that report would be most likely January of '26 or December of '25, something like that?
For the 2024?
Yeah, like a year from now, basically.
Yeah. I mean, the goal, the goal is to get it out sooner. Some of it, it's like we're waiting for industry reports to come out, and those usually come out in June or so. So, yeah, you could expect it late summer, early fall, maybe December next year.
Okay. I just remember when I started that I think it was in a January that we received the report, so I'm not, as long as the report keeps coming, we keep getting updated to know how the industry is doing. I think that's, that's what's important here. Quick question. Quick question. It's obvious to me that the cannabis numbers that you're getting are from use permits. Do we know that they're active, or is it just what's currently approved?
So those are, so the cannabis figures, that's not, so there, there's like two different sets of data, right? The CDD has the permitted approved acres, and then the tax collector's office has the acreage of what was actually grown. So that was from the tax collector's office of what was actually grown.
Okay. And so that's a very specific thing. The numbers that you're getting for everything else, is it based on agricultural employee ID? Is it based on, like, how do you get those numbers? How do you know that you're encompassing everybody that's doing agricultural work? What's the criteria that needs to be met in order for those numbers to count?
So, you mean for the cannabis numbers?
You have pesticide ID, you have other type of IDs, like how do you identify all the variations of agriculture that's happening here?
Sure, sure. So some of it, there's industry reports. So like timber, there's like a report that's issued by the state, you know, packing facilities, processing sheds, they have information on how much was produced for the county. So we use that information. We also reach out to some of our smaller producers, our livestock producers, individually making phone calls, sending out surveys. 100% data return is not always going to happen, so we do the best that we can with the information that we have. So we always encourage people to, you know, please provide your numbers. One, the information they provide to us is confidential. So, and as you can see with the report, there's nothing in the report that identifies any single producer, so it's just a comprehensive data set.
And I know that you're involved with our Food Policy Council group and just looking at our vegetable crops going down to, I think it said three acres in 2023, if I'm correct. Granted, that doesn't include things like melons or other types of crops that fall under miscellaneous. So there's, there's a real number to figure out somewhere in there, but there's still a reduction. And while I value the idea of agriculture and the variety of things that can happen within agriculture, and it doesn't seem historically that we've had food production at a great amount other than walnuts or pears or the staple crops that we have here. But it definitely gives me motivation to keep working, and I know that we are planning to get our strategic plan completed very soon and bring that back to the board supervisors, to let the board know what is the plan with the Food Policy Council, and I appreciate your participation in that. But seeing those numbers, there's so many positives, and then I get to that one, I'm like, ah, we're down to three. We'll work on that. So thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Let's open it up for a public comment. Anyone wish to speak on the crop report? Come on up to the microphone, raise your hand in the Zoom room.
Hello, Helen Owen. I'm curious, you have cattle and calves, but I didn't notice any other livestock or poultry. So is there statistics on that? I know we have a robust sheep industry here in the county and goats. So just other livestock.
So, so we do, under the livestock production category of the crop report, we have what's called miscellaneous livestock. So that encompasses sheep, goats, hogs, because there's kind of a limited number of producers. To separate those out into their own categories would kind of identify those producers. So it is in there. And poultry is in there under livestock and poultry products?
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, bringing it back to the board. And no further comments or questions. I'm opening up because I don't believe there's any actions required. But I did not look at the recommended action.
It's just a presentation?
Yeah, just a presentation.
Right.
Thank you very much. Always look forward to this.
Ready to, yeah.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
That's historical.
There's probably way more hogs and poultry back then.
That might be the solution. But the screen's not being shared, so we're good. All right, next on our agenda, 6.7 or 9:50 a.m., consideration and discussion of the resolution of formation declaring the formation of the Lake County Hospital Improvement District. And we have Mr. Ben Rickelman. All right.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
I don't think your mic's on.
Is it green? Ta-da. Good morning, Board. Ben Rickelman, Deputy County Administrative Officer. I'm here once again. Keep going.
Test, test, test. Okay, it's good enough. I'm here with the Lake County Hospital Improvement District. So this is a four-step process, and thankfully, we are at the last step. With a business-based assessment district with state law, you have to have a resolution of attention, public meeting, public hearing, and then the resolution of formation. Then I will say, after this process, if it's approved by the board, it'll be brought to the California Department of Health, and they will look through it. And then it will need also federal approval with the Center of Medicare and Medicaid Services. So I included this slide. At the public hearing, there is a request with the annual report that will be provided to the board to show with Sutter Lakeside and Aventis Clear Lake how the rates for both, for care will work versus the systems as a whole. So we have, this will be one of the reporting metrics, and you'll have this comparative analysis showing if there's any impact with this. And then also at the board's request, we did include a slide for the annual report that will also just show service volume. So this will have both inpatient and outpatient for the two hospitals. Those were the only edits since the last meeting. So we did incorporate with the treasurer tax collector taking the 1% assessment fee for management of the funds, and everything else has been left the same.
Anything further? Want to invite the hospitals to potentially come up and make a comment before we bring it back to the board? You don't have to if you don't want to. Okay. Any comments or questions from board members? Supervisor Green.
Just my vote today will be consistent with prior votes on this issue, and it's no disrespect to those involved, and thank you, Mr. Rickelman, for your hard work on this.
I do have a quick question, doesn't change the outcome, just curious. So we're looking at potentially, if I remember correctly, 16 million, which the 1%, I'm guessing would be around the 160. And that's per year, correct?
Correct, so.
Where does that money go if it doesn't get spent in dealing with the collection and disbursements to the hospitals? Does that go into general fund? Does that go into any specific category? Does that go back to the hospitals? Just kind of curious. And what also happens if we find out that we're actually expending more than that 1%? Do we have the ability to amend within the five years that this has been created? I was just curious about that because I didn't have any details.
So we could amend the management plan. I would just have to come back to the board, so that could be adjusted that way. I would want to confer with Patrick. So this is a separate pot of money, so I don't think there's like an easy way to transfer to the general fund if there's surplus, kind of how the TID operates. So usually assessment districts are firewalled as their own kind of financial kingdom. But I will check with Patrick, kind of what the processes would be if the 1% is more than enough, or if we would need more. I'm doubtful. I'm extremely doubtful that it would be insufficient.
I mean, too.
Since it's only two entities, it should actually be significantly more, less of a burden to administrate than the TID. I mean, you only have two entities and they're willing participants, so you're not tracking down money or going through enforcement.
Okay. It'd be nice to, I guess, review that after a full year's worth of practice to see where it is and what does eventually happen to those dollars at the end. But that was my only curiosity. I really appreciate the update on the reporting. I think it fits exactly what was requested by the board and ready to move forward. I guess my last question is, I've been following what's been happening at the city of Clear Lake because they're the other jurisdiction that needs to also approve this. Did they approve all the way through step four, or do they still have one step left to do?
So all the city of Clear Lake had to do was pass a resolution of consent, which was an attachment. So they did pass that back in September, and then so for a business-based assessment district, since the hospital's in Clear Lake, they have to do that. So we, it's acknowledged in the resolution that the city passed it, and that was the only action they needed to take.
So different process than what we're following.
Correct.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment regarding this item. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Come on up to the microphone or raise your hand in Zoom. And seeing none of the above, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution's been offered.
Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Green.
Nay.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia.
Aye. Thank you very much. I also will say a first in the state of California, I believe. Yes. So let's see how this works out for the benefit of the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead and move on to our 6.8 item, 10 a.m., Presentation Regarding the Housing Action and Implementation Plan, H A I P. And with us, we have Ms. Lisa Judd. Good morning.
Good morning, Board. Lisa Judd, Deputy County Administrative Officer, Housing. The County Office of Administration is very pleased to be here to give you a presentation from Placeworks regarding our ongoing work for the Housing Action and Implementation Plan, H A P. Placeworks' presentation will discuss sections of the H A P, including current conditions, engagement and outreach, site selection. And additionally, they will preview that, a GIS tool that will enhance the accessibility of the plan, and an update schedule for the H A P completion. I also wanted to mention that this has been a collaborative effort with community development, specifically Director Turner and Deputy Walker Smith, in addition to the Vision 2050 team. This will be a foundational element for our housing element. I think that was redundant, but. And with that, I will pass this over to Amy and Nicole from Placeworks.
Good morning. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Let me see if I can get this to share. There we go. My name is Amy Sinseimer, as Lisa said, with Placeworks. I also have with me here today Nicole West. We've been happy to be working with the community and the staff since earlier this year, and happy to provide an update today. So just to give an overview on the project, the Housing Action and Implementation Plan is to augment, you know, the state-required efforts that are part of your housing element update, and really take a look at the, you know, local need in the county as well as in Clear Lake and Lakeport. So it is related to the general plan update process that's underway, which the board has been involved with, and probably many of you who are here today. But is not a part of that plan. It will be moving forward on a faster schedule. So we are kind of right in the end of the middle section of the work here. You can see that we have worked to gather a lot of community input, mostly during the summer months this last year. We also have put together a current conditions report, looking at, you know, demographics and other factors that affect housing in the county. We will get into that a little bit more in some additional slides. We've also been starting to work on sites analysis, as well as analysis of what are the need, the needs, the gaps, and what kind of strategies and goals can be implemented moving forward. We do not have a draft yet of the goals, strategies, actions, and resources part of the H A P, as we call it, the plan. And so that will be coming in winter 2025 for the public review, is our estimate right now. So I think that's it for this first slide. Moving on to the, as I mentioned, the current conditions and summary report, this will be an appendix to the draft H A P plan. Does include quite a bit of demographic information, population, economics, housing. In particular, there are certain populations that tend to have greater housing needs, and those that do in Lake County and the cities we have highlighted, wanted to mention veterans are a group that has been highlighted, and there are some, you know, assistance programs available, including federal vouchers for housing in the county, but there could be more, so that is one thing the strategies are looking at. We also have quite a bit of information about seniors in this part of the report. There are, you know, developments specifically that are age-restricted for seniors. There are about, excuse me, there are 14 that we have listed in table 22 of this part of the report, and they have capacity for over 450 residents. There's at least one additional project that's coming online right now. So that is a need in the county as well. We have a section of this appendix that's about regulations related to housing, both in terms of the local zoning at the county and city level, but also state law, as well as, you know, how does all of this work together to either facilitate or not facilitate housing? This existing conditions information sets out the regulatory framework, and then the next steps in the plan will kind of take a look at, you know, are there changes that are needed, or things that can be done to incentivize housing? Get into a little bit more of the detail on that in a minute, but we also have a section that talks about fair housing. There is quite a bit of state and federal law addressing fair housing, and when the county and the cities update their housing elements in a few years, that is a new focus for the state. So we've taken a look at some of the data, um, for your county. We also have information about local and regional resources for housing services, housing facilities. What's the state of infrastructure? And also some information about where folks can go to get housed during a disaster and other disaster-related services and issues. So we wanted to talk a little bit more about some of the more recent changes in state law related to housing that either are already impacting, um, the Lake County area or could potentially be, you know, something that makes a difference. So Assembly Bill twenty-one sixty-two went into effect a few years back. It basically says that, um, all jurisdictions across the state need to allow for permanent supportive housing, uh, which basically housing that's affordable and also provides supportive services. Uh, there are many different types of permanent supportive housing, so it can be for different groups of folks. But they must be allowed, you know, without discretionary review in multifamily residential or mixed-use areas. So that's a change from historically, you know, that was something that was left up to the local governments. Um, and part of that law also says that when applications for this kind of project come in, they must be reviewed in a timely fashion. That's the, the short version of what the second bullet says there. So, um, this, I think, is already something that's, um, happening in some places in the county and, um, maybe as a result of this law. Um, accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units, um, have really become allowed much more broadly across the state of California since about twenty eighteen. The, the law changes almost every year on this topic, so, uh, in general, it has just become more permissive. If you want to build a granny unit or accessory dwelling unit, either in your yard or inside your existing home, um, that is generally allowed if you follow certain, uh, development standards or criteria in the law. And just a little more on that, just some examples of, you know, the things that the state law talks about. So lot size, height setbacks from, you know, the street and other buildings, other properties, uh, number of bedrooms, parking, the size of these accessory dwelling units and, you know, whether or not fees can be charged. So in general, all of these things are, um, set in state law and, uh, the local jurisdictions comply with them. And then finally, in terms of environmental review of projects, so generally under the California Environmental Quality Act, uh, there are certain residential projects that do not have to go through as much review, which makes it more of a sure thing for somebody proposing that project. They have to meet certain standards, health and safety, um, consistency with the general plan, things like that. But, um, once that happens, there are certain categories of exemptions, is what it's called, to actually, uh, allow for a very minimal review and not really any public review, um, of certain projects. And there's a list here of some of those exemptions that, um, may already be used in Lake County or could be, um, potentially suited for this area. So, uh, these, this type of option has been increasing under state law over the years. So, um, trying to streamline certain types of housing development. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Nicole. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Hi, everyone. Thank you for inviting me to share these updates with you. As Amy mentioned, it's been a pleasure working with Lisa and the rest of the staff and the community on this effort. Next slide, please. I'll talk first about the outreach activities that we've been doing. The outreach for the H A P has been thorough and we received a lot of feedback from a wide range of perspectives. We benefited greatly from the parallel timing of Lake County twenty fifty, the general plan update. We were able to collect input on housing from a combined community survey, two community open houses, meetings with the general plan advisory committee, the local area plan advisory committees, an environmental justice focus group and meetings with Spanish-speaking residents and several Native American tribes. Specifically for the H A P, we also engaged with local stakeholders and housing specialists, including the continuum of care and professionals working in land development, real estate and economic development. And we also received valuable information from the nonprofit N C O and from the Lake County Department of Social Services. Next slide, please. We've prepared a detailed summary document that will be in appendix to the H A P where you can read more about all of these findings and all of the outreach activities. And these findings inform the goals and strategies for the H A P as well. They include, um, fire safety and insurance as the biggest, most broadly, um, frequently mentioned housing-related concern through all the different outreach activities. And there's also broad support for a variety of housing and ensuring that there's types of housing that are affordable to all of the different economic levels. Also outreach participants showed a lot of support for things that the county can do, uh, and the two cities to amend their zoning regulations to be more flexible and speed up residential construction. Next slide, please. There's also a lot of support for infill development and limiting new development in certain areas. And that finding informs the, the plan as well as the site analysis. Also, the community considers maintaining and rehabilitating homes and neighborhoods as a really high priority. And generally vacation homes and short-term rentals are considered beneficial. Next slide, please. So that summary document that I mentioned has these major themes that really bubbled to the surface with all of the robust outreach activities that we did. It's, uh, a lot about the concerns and opportunities, um, what is needed, who needs housing, where should it go? How should it be done? So you can look forward to seeing that as an appendix soon. I'll go ahead and move on to the site analysis now. And you can go, yes, thank you. So the purpose of the site analysis is to identify sou- sites for a variety of types of housing. And this includes suitable sites, which means generally that housing's already allowed and they're either vacant or they're good sites for redevelopment. We're also looking to identify priority sites, which means that they are suitable, plus there's other conditions, either of the site itself or the surrounding area that make it favorable for housing and, uh, really a particular priority for a variety of reasons. And then we're also looking for sites to consider for rezoning. And that could be to add housing as an allowed use where it's not allowed right now or to densify where housing is already allowed. And these are being identified in coordination with the potential land use changes that are being discussed as a part of the general plan update. Next slide, please. So I have two slides about the considerations that we think of when we're looking at the sites. We look at the housing element inventory from the last cycle and see which sites are still available. And then we also look ahead to the next cycle, which is coming up here just in a couple of years. We're really planning to, as Lisa mentioned, set you up for success for that. And so we think of what H C D, the Housing and Community Development Department, we think of what they're going to be looking for when they do their review and certification. So we apply their criteria. For example, sites that are suitable for meeting the lower income housing needs can only be counted where at least fifteen units per acre is allowed. And then they also have pretty strict definitions of vacant and underutilized, and so I'll talk about that in just a minute. And then there's also some fair housing considerations that we keep in mind that we know H C D is going to prioritize. Also, we've been looking at tax credit financing applications and the additional points that you can get for citing your site being adjacent to transit parks and other amenities. So we're keeping that in mind as well. And then we're coordinating more with the general plan team, um, in particular, the team working on the safety element to make sure that we're considering flooding, landslides, evacuation constraints and fire hazards. And then also water, of course, and wastewater is a big consideration as well. Next slide, please. Okay, so as I mentioned, H C D is pretty strict about what they will consider as a vacant site. There can't be any structures, even structures on not permanent foundations, no improvements or existing uses. However, that doesn't mean that a site is not good for redevelopment. And so we would consider an underutilized site to be one where it's not vacant, but it actually is a really good candidate for redevelopment. And that could be either of the entire site or maybe there's an existing use that's going to stay on a portion and there's room on that site for additional development. So some of the examples here are listed on the screen for what would be a ti- a type of site like this, where if you might have, say you have a big anchor store and they know that they're going to be moving to another location in the next year and those uses are going to be discontinued, start thinking about what's going to happen with that site. And then also places where we have abandoned vacant buildings or deteriorated and older structures or where you have a high opportunity area with other kind of neighborhood amenities nearby that really make it a good candidate for adding, uh, potentially a mixed-use development there. Next slide, please. Okay, yeah, so Lisa mentioned this interactive web map, which is a really, um, fun and exciting way of being able to show the results of the analysis that we're working on. This is not yet available to the public, but it will be once we get it all buttoned up. So I have a, just a few slides here that show some of the features. In the top left, you can see that there is a place where you can show different items from the legend. And then you can also look at different layers. And then you can also filter for different things that we will be, that we're in the process of adding through our analysis. For example, how I mentioned the suitable sites, priority sites, potential rezones, vacant and underutilized. These are the different filters that we would use. And actually, Amy, you could advance a couple of slides. I have those shown. Yep, that's the one in the middle and then one more slide is the one on the right. So, um, let's, yep, and then we can stay there for a second. There's a couple of ways to find parcels on the map. You can zoom in manually or you can enter addresses or A P N's into the search bar and then you can zoom to the site that way. Um, next slide, please. And then once you get to the site, that's what you see there. It pops up with all this information and we've been enriching the data with all this different information. And so when it is available, you'll be able to see all of that. Next slide, please. And then another way, instead of just searching for one individual site, another way to use this tool is to use the map filters to, for example, look at all the sites that are vacant or all the ones that are priority. And then you can further refine that through a tool that we added on the right that you can, where you can select the different jurisdictions and filter for that as well. So that's my last slide and, um, we are happy to take comments and questions from you.
Thank you very much for your presentation and your work. Supervisor Piska.
Very comprehensive. There's a lot going into this and it was so needed, so thank you all for that. Um, one of the things that, um, we've, has come up a lot in my work for disaster recovery is what happens after we have a disaster where housing is lost. And then we know that checkerboarding happens when development begins again and you have lots that are developed and lots aren't, that aren't developed. And we're seeing that in all the footprints of all the fires that we've had. And so when we think of fire as our big disaster and we have check, checkerboarding, checkerboarding happening, then we have increased risk in those new communities. And I know Chief Duncan's here, he sees it every day. We know this is something that's going to come, you know, with the footprint of the Boyle's Fire after Clear Lake. So one, one strategy that's been talked about, um, and some of the national groups I'm working with, is developing a land trust that comes in and buys up those lots because we've got people that are never coming back, yet they are hanging on to their property here. And they don't really understand the peril that they're putting their neighbors in, potential peril. So a way to do this is, is buy up these properties, um, through a land trust, manage them, manage the vegetation and then, um, potentially sell them to developers or builders. Um, this is happening in Maui right now, where they're really trying to protect the local community and the people that live there so that they're, the native people aren't displaced. So there, it's applied in different ways throughout the country. So I wanted to bring this up. It's something that, uh, we ha- Lisa and I have talked about and I, I also think Director Turner may have been in on that call. Um, I don't know how it looks in our county, but I do know that we have our new county foundation, we have this H A P and we have some plans. So I would like this also to be something that we consider and I hope the rest of the board, um, has consensus for that.
Thank you for your comment. Supervisor Green.
Thank you. Question and then a question slash comment. The first one was for the slide deck the first presenter pert- put on and I regret, I don't have the name where I can read it. Uh, but there was a, uh, a reference to Lakeport Dam on one of those slides. Perk my ears up, um, since we don't actually have a Lakeport Dam. So can you pull that slide up or explain the context of that reference?
Yes, uh, so we do have some information about the dam in our report. Um, I can pull up the report and, and see what it specifically says there. One second. Yeah, so we do have some information that says that Lakeport Dam is an earth and dam, um, and portions of the city are downstream from it. Is that not correct?
I would say not at this point. Fifty years ago, there was planning for a Lakeport Dam. There was also planning for a Pomodam, uh, down in Big Valley, uh, but neither of those projects came to fruition. Uh, and I'm, I was a little curious, even if there was a dam there, I didn't know the context and the housing analysis. So anyway, I just wanted to highlight that. That may be something you want to double-check on, uh, and update that. My, my second question has to do with short-term rentals and the, and the findings of, uh, general beneficial stuff. That seems counterintuitive to me because when I think about housing availability, um, and we have perfectly good residential homes that are basically precluded from housing people permanently on a year-round basis because they're being made available for short-term rentals, uh, or as, uh, second homes for vacationers or stuff like that. So I'm wondering how deep a dive this particular H A P is going to go into short-term rentals because, um, uh, maybe there's general agreement and the people you've been talking to about their beneficial status. But when it comes up to here at the policy level, uh, I don't know that I'm instantly convinced that it is beneficial. I think the equal argument could be that they're detrimental to housing availability in Lake County. So, uh, can you just speak a little bit about, uh, how deep you went into S T Rs and, uh, how deep you're going to go as we move forward on this H A P? Uh, you know, if it's more of a general plan issue, we can talk about it at that level, but this seems to be where the, the money meets the, I don't know, I don't even know what I'm saying. But can you discuss S T Rs and your findings on that?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Thank you for that question. And I think in the interest of brevity, we just gave you kind of the headline, but the outreach summary has a lot more detail on that. And you're absolutely correct that there are community concerns about, um, vacation homes and short-term rentals, uh, replacing long-term residents. They, the community survey had a lot of questions about this and about concerns and benefits. And then also about what kind of potential regulations the county could take and, um, lots of different ideas there and results from the community survey. Also, this community survey was organized around the local areas and so the results that are reported in the summary show which local areas have more concerns than other areas, um, and also which areas believe that there's, uh, more benefits versus concerns.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Crandall.
Yes, so, um, thank you for this. I'm glad to see that, um, you know, it mentions in, in the, um, legislation text that, um, the priorities are in place because we have, we need more housing at all income levels. I bring that up because, um, I would like to see what we can also find, um, or put ahead of this stream, I guess you could, well, that's the best way I can say it is. The issues that I, I have with a couple of developers. So when these developers come or these folks that are going to build, um, implement this and I, they, at times are building for senior citizens or people with low income. or people with low income, you know, needs. And so these folks sometimes use this capital improvement mindset to impose onto these renters that are on fixed incomes. And I understand at the state level, there's not a lot we can do. But if there's something we can do to prevent that and ensure that some of these folks aren't basically moved out of their homes because of this, if there's something we can do, I'd like to see what that is. I have three of them in my district. They're also tied to things that have happened in Willets and a couple of other places. And so I just want to make sure that we, we keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. So there was a request, at least for potential consensus from Supervisor Pyska to maybe continue looking into the opportunities. And I, I see the checkerboard already in existence in some of our old developments that have not sustained fire or anything like that as well, because lots were sold a long time ago, and certain families, certain owners just decided not to do developments. So as you go through the avenues, for example, in the city of Clear Lake, you'll start seeing some of those checkerboard lots, where absolutely, it's where you see the vegetation just a little bit more out of control. And most of the time, you'll have neighbors that take care of that rather than the actual responsible owners themselves, if they even take care of it at all. And so I think that looking for ways to better secure our communities, I think is, I'm open to that. I'm not sure if that's the solution, but if I don't have that discussion and open up for this conversation, then maybe I'm saying no to something that might actually work. So I'm, I'm open for the idea to come back to the board and see what's possible. And I think that, one of the things, I'm really curious about the sites that you're looking for, because it, I, I, I don't have the details, but I saw that you're obviously looking at the entire county. But I hope that, I, I, I really appreciate what you mentioned, because it was also something I was thinking the whole time, that as we're doing this simultaneously with the General Plan Update 2050, that we really review where is it that we want to really focus for growth? And I'm looking at the GIS map right now. We have our community growth boundaries, but I don't know when the last time we necessarily updated that we have large communities that are not specified as community growth boundaries. And I think along with community growth boundaries come certain measures to protect those communities. For example, cannabis. You have to be a thousand feet away from community growth boundaries in order not to be embedded within these communities that have grown over the years. And so certain ones are not necessarily made safe from those, and when I say safe, I mean subjected to the potential smell that comes from those types of operations and the traffic that comes from those operations and things like that. And so I hope that we're looking at what 2050 will be doing, if that, there's going to be an expansion of community growth boundaries within the county of Lake, and also that we're really looking at infill sites within the community growth boundaries, because it's so much easier to protect the community growth boundaries from the fires that we've endured throughout the last decade or so, that we just have to, to be mindful that in the future, if, if a private person wants to build a house in the Wui and, and the wildlife urban interface, that's, that's up to them and, and go through the planning phase and go through the, the permitting phase. But if we're going to be helping whatsoever in getting tax credits or using some of the funds that we receive from the state or feds, I would want to make sure that we're focusing on ensuring that those are going to be added into the community growth boundaries, just because we have to think in the 20, 30 years. And if this is what we're experiencing right now, I don't know that we've tapered off with the issues that we're dealing with when it comes with climate change, fires, and so on. I'm more worried about the fires than I am about the floods, but flooding is also still an issue that we have to be wary of. And so that's, that's really my only thing, that I'm hoping the site selection is really focusing on. And I'm putting my LAFCO hat. We, we want to maintain our open space. We want to, we just had a conversation about agriculture. We want to maintain our agricultural space as well. And there's a lot of chance for infilling in those checkerboards and working with rehabilitation to make those things happen. So those are my only comments, but I do appreciate the deep dive that you've done. I'm looking forward to that mapping tool being available to the public and seeing the final report as you continue to work towards that.
Thank you for that. I'll add that, a little bit of context as well. With this initial pass at the sites for the Hape, our aim is to provide the county and the cities with a lot of information in a really clear format. We do want to help with identifying priority sites that can be marketed to developers. But then it's the housing element that's coming up in a couple of years, where you can take this as well as the other results from the general plan process that will be happening after the Hape wraps up. And then you can even drill down further at that point in a couple of years when working on your housing element inventory.
Thank you so much. And I did see that Director Turner approached the DIAS, wondering if she wanted to respond or make a comment before I open it up for public comment. And Vice Chair, I see your question.
Thank you. Muriya Turner, Community Development Director. I'd be happy to have a discussion with you regarding community growth boundaries offline. I find your, your thoughts very helpful, but I don't want to derail the focus that we have on the Hape right now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Crandall.
The other thing I was going to mention, I heard short-term rentals as well mentioned by my Supervisor Green. And I know that there's been some discussions and work that's moving in that area on another end. So that's where we can, with an ordinance, put that ahead and ensure that this, it doesn't affect this. So I'll let that come when it comes, because I know it is, but yeah.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Green, did you want to respond?
Not just a Supervisor Pyska suggestion, I have consensus. I agree, I agree with that, agree with that.
Okay.
I don't know where my mic went.
All right, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. And I'm going to start on Zoom. We've had a couple of hands up, so let's start with Marco Cambarra.
Good morning, Board. Thank you for the opportunity to ask questions on the Hape. I have a couple of comments. First, I'm sorry, I didn't explain my, my background. I am a member of the General Plan Advisory Committee, and I was wondering where the materials are available that you have. It sounds like you have great data, and I would like to take a look at the community input that you've gotten. I think that would definitely better inform work on the general plan. And then I have two other comments and, and questions. One is relative to what Vice Chair Crandall brought up, what's happening with some of our mobile parks, which house our seniors and low-income people. Some communities have made arrangements to allow mobile home residents to purchase a mobile home park before investors purchase, purchase a park. And I was wondering if you can make a note of that to see if that can be feasible for Lake County. And my other question is, would you please comment on your approach to assessing the farm worker housing situation in Lake County? Thank you.
Thank you for your questions. Nicole or Amy, are you able to respond?
Yeah, certainly to the first and the third question. We have a draft of the engagement summary, but there are just a few meetings that haven't occurred yet. We're finishing up some of the meetings, the consultations with tribes. There's also an agricultural industry stakeholder meeting coming up, and we want to add summaries of both of those. And we also anticipate meeting with staff in Lakeport and Clear Lake as well. And so after that, the outreach summary will be finalized, and we can work with staff about how that will be released to the public. And then, what was the third question? Sorry, oh, the agricultural, yeah, so the stakeholder meeting that's coming up will speak to that topic.
Whoever has their phone on speaker, if you can at least turn off your phone.
And then I can say just a bit about the mobile home comment. So we are looking into protections for mobile, existing mobile home park residents as part of the goals and strategies. Some of that already exists under state law, but we're looking into, you know, options that could happen in your county. So thanks for that suggestion. And we've definitely gotten that input as part of the outreach so far as well.
Thank you for your responses to that. Next is Betsy Khan.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. This is Betsy Khan for the Essential Public Information Center. I, I would like to suggest that, as one commenter made, the populations within the growth, community growth boundaries that were set in 2008 may have increased significantly. And so it would be helpful to see the outline of the community growth boundary with the added growth identified in those parcels that are surrounding it. More importantly, I would like to see that the community growth boundaries establish five, 10, and 20-year planning horizons under the rubric of the Sphere of Influence, similar to what LAFCO does for the independent special districts that provide health and safety services, and make sure that the, each of those special district boundaries with their, oh, sorry, with, with their boundaries are workable, so that you don't have a community growth boundary sphere for 10 years that exceeds the ability of the water district, for example, to provide water. So I think the Sphere of Influence model is really helpful for communities to understand where they can grow and what it would take to get there. Let's see, the other, yeah, no, that's, that's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Betsy. I see no further hands in Zoom. Anybody in the audience wish to speak on this item? I see no one getting up, so I'll bring it back to the board. Any final comments? And again, this is only partway through the final report. Looking forward to the final report. It looked like it said towards March would be the end. And so we'll, we'll welcome that back when it's ready to come back. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
And at this moment in time, I think this should be fast. And I want to offer that we do 7.3 real quick before we do the 6.9, because we've already had the discussion. And so Ms. Judd, if we can take up your item while you're still here, 7.3. Consideration of Resolution and MOU to create the Lake County Regional Housing Trust Fund, LCRHTF, and B, consideration of direction to staff regarding the allocation of remaining permanent local housing allocation, PLHA, program funds for the Lake County Regional Housing Trust Fund for years 2021, 2022, and 2023. Ms. Judd.
Hello again. Staff would like to request the Board to approve the creation of the Lake County Regional Housing Trust Fund via the Resolution and Memorandum of Understanding between the County of Lake, Lakeport, and Clear Lake. The Housing Action Implementation Plan and the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, RENA, are both regional approaches to addressing housing needs in Lake County. Therefore, it follows that the Housing Trust Fund should also be a regional level to promote greater collaboration and pooling of resources to address critical housing needs that encompass the entirety of Lake County.
My apologies. So what I wanted to bring forward today is the MOU and the resolution. In part of that, it does reference the administrative guidelines in that. And I do have a draft of those prepared. However, they were not submitted with that. This, this Board would not actually approve the administrative guidelines. It would be with the Housing Trust Fund. However, because those documents do represent, do reference the administrative guidelines, I'd like to request for a continuance until next week.
Okay. And do we have a time certain, or Johanna? 3:00 PM on the 17th? And if that's what we have available, then so be it. All right, let's open it up for public comment on this item, again regarding the continuation of the item. See no hands in Zoom, no movement in the chamber. Looking for a motion to continue this to December 17, 3:00 PM.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we'll see this next week. All right, then we will go back to our 11:00 AM item, 6.9. Sitting as the Board of Directors, Lake County Watershed Protection District. Presentation update, your timing was impeccable. Update on recent invasive golden mussel detection in the San Joaquin Delta and state regional and local response and management actions to date. And we have Director Borre from Special Districts and Angela Dow from Water Resources. When, you always have handouts.
Do you guys have any notes or questions so you can fill out the right slide?
Thank you.
Have reference, and you can either skip that to the end or keep it.
Do we need five minutes? Thank you. We, we all fear the updates. You never know what's going to happen on the, when your software updates. Is it on a USB?
It is here, I sent it liquid file.
Okay.
Right now. Okay.
We need to make you a panelist.
Well, thank you for having me, Board, while Joanna is working her magic to get the PowerPoint up. I just wanted to say that I'll be presenting today on the Lake County Invasive Golden Mussel Update as part of the Watershed Protection District, Water Resource Department. I'm Angela de Palma Dow. I am the Invasive Species Program Coordinator for our department. And I don't have a super short PowerPoint for you, because this is the first time that you guys are hearing a lot about the golden mussel and the first time the public will be hearing about it from a Lake County perspective. We do have a website, if anybody wants to visit that. And the PowerPoint I'm presenting today is going to be on our website. It is on there right now. So if you go to Lake County Water Resources, under the Invasive Mussel tab on the left, there's a Golden Mussel webpage, and this PowerPoint will be presented there. And I did want to shout out to our Ramp Monitor staff. There's a bunch in the audience today, and they are the front line. So we have a current quagga invasive, invasive quagga zebra mussel program in place here. Yay. At Clear Lake and the rest of Lake County. And the Ramp Monitor staff is vital for being the first line and the last line of defense. People travel sometimes hundreds, thousands of miles to come fishing in our world-class lake. And the, sometimes the first person they see and the last person they see before they get on the lake, when they get out of the lake, is our Ramp Monitor staff. So they are essential to this program. And, ooh, I get a whole PowerPoint. Are you okay, Robin?
Oh, yeah.
And then, Robin, if you just want to introduce yourself, she's Special Districts and here to support the program.
Yeah, I'm Robin Borre with the Special Districts, and we have three different lake intake structures where we provide potable water and water to the geysers. So we're especially interested in this on how it could get through the screens and clog things up and that kind of stuff. So I'm here to support her.
And I will say that in the Board, there is a fact sheet provided, if anybody would like to look at it, that's in chambers, and we'll have that posted on our website as well. So here's our Ramp Monitor staff on the screen. Again, this program only works because they do, and we are just invaluable, they're invaluable service to this lake and to this program. And just today, we're going to talk about what we know about golden mussels, what we don't know, what we think. So the perspective of water what we think. So the perspective of water resources as the bestowed lake managers here for the county for Clear Lake. I have some specific asks for the Board of Supervisors, Board of Directors, and the public, and then briefly some next steps. So here we have examples of the, of the Quaga zebra mussels. These are the ones that are currently been the focus of our prevention efforts here, both in the state of California and also in Clear Lake. On the left, you guys can see they have stripes. They look like kind of zebras. That's their name. And then golden mussels on the right. So similar in size, similar in shape. Golden mussels, like their namesake, have like this iridescent shine to them. And hence named golden mussels. They can colonize hard and soft surfaces. A key point of this, and this is the science, this is a technical, some technical background. The Quaga zebra mussels are in the Drosina genus, and the golden mussels are the Lampyra. So they're a completely different organism, not related at all, which makes management and response a little difficult. This is the Quaga zebra mussel map. The board, you were shown this, I believe, in 2021. And this is the rate of expansion of Quaga zebra mussels across the United States. So starting in the 80s until present day, you can see they've moved from the Laresian Great Lakes all the way across to the West. We have 40 years of information on Quaga zebra mussels here in North America. Compared to the current distribution of golden mussels in North America is here in the Delta in California. It is found nowhere else in the United States. We don't have information about how the species interacts in North American freshwater systems. Specifically, golden mussels are found in the San Joaquin Delta in October by the California Department of Water Resources. And every week, they're having some more detections come up. So the map on the bottom right is a close-up of the area of the Delta where they're found. And just in the last few weeks, some of those dots have gone from blue to red. Blue meaning they've done monitoring, and then red being confirmed adult locations being found. So from our perspective, as managers of the lake, we're considering the entire Delta at this point kind of being infested with these, these species. And to give you some reference, the Delta is located about 150 miles from Clear Lake at some of the earliest launch areas. This is a great map that was provided by our partners at Colorado Parks Department. So the Colorado State Parks Department, they have a digital database called the Watercraft Inspection Database. Our Ramp Monitors currently use this database to check when boats are coming in from out of county, out of state, if they've come from an infested water body for Quaga zebra mussels. The Colorado database has since added golden mussel locations into their program. And they provided this map to us. And what it's showing you is the, where boat inspections are put into the database and their last visited water body. So the origin, the origin point you can see in the center there is the Delta. And then each line represents either about 10, or 10 to 50, or more than 50 boats traveling to a location and then getting entered into the Colorado database. And what you can see is Clear Lake is listed for as having the fourth most amount of boats coming from the Delta at 148. Lake Beresza being the top one there, and then Lake Tahoe. So it just kind of shows you the boat traffic that comes from the Delta. Temporal context, not everybody's from California or gets around that much. I just wanted to show you, if someone was to drive and they're, they're leaving a boat ramp in the Delta and they're coming to Clear Lake, that's kind of what the map would look like. It's about a two-hour drive. Currently, the closest public access or open access Quaga zebra mussel infested lake is seven hours away in Southern California. So that's a big difference, especially in like a warm July day of how much water is sitting in the boat, where there could be mussels living and the transportation times, let alone in the winter when there's lots of rain and it's cool. So what do we know about these so far? This is a great article from Science that talks about the golden mussel invasion that's occurring right now in Brazil. And this is showing kind of where they're from and how they move trans across the ocean. So they are from Southeast Asia area. And they were moved by ship over the ocean to Brazil. And they've been there since the 90s. And here's a little map of their spread. So this is where they are now. And so this is where, if we're going to learn anything about management and impacts, this is the area that we're going to get that information from. The little graph on the left just shows you that between 1991 and 1995, they colonize a space of two square meters, up to about 150,000 individuals. So that's pretty significant in their colonization rate. They attach onto substrates and then they, they reproduce and they just show like that picture is right there. They just totally colonize a whole area. So the state of California has indicated they are looking to programs that are going on in the Amazon area in Brazil in order to manage and combat golden mussels. So what can the mussels do? Well, the juveniles are free swimming, so they can go anywhere where there's a current, settle, and then they can attach and turn into adults. They can't go upstream, so they can't swim up currents. Adults can settle on softer, hard substrate, so they can settle in muck, sand, and also onto pilings and dock infrastructure. And then according to the state Department of Water Resources, adults are slightly mobile, which is a lot different than other mussels. So they cleared a piling, and then three days later, they saw some adults that had moved up that piling. So that is pretty scary for these guys. And just like Quaga zebra mussels, they do filter feed. And so this means they'll compete with all our sport fisheries for green algae as food. So what can they do? The estimates from Brazil has indicated in some power plants, it takes, it costs about 20,000 a day to do operation maintenance. Here's an example of one of those pipes. It's about a foot wide pipe to move water through a power plant that they have to scrape and clean. And this is not even including drinking water, you know, treatments and products that also might be impacted here. In the lab, they've shown that they're resistant to some diseases, also some industry treatments. They can withstand brackish saltier waters. They've been shown to survive in fish guts. I know, this is getting bad as we keep going on the list here. And they do not have any known natural enemies in native areas. So there are some predator fish in some introduced areas. But again, if you have a bunch of fish that are eating these and they can survive in their fish guts, then that means they're just moved around the water body, or they could be the potentials there. Can they survive in Clear Lake based on the conditions that are here in Clear Lake? Yes, they can. So this is a table that was provided by CDFW during one of our task force meetings a couple weeks ago. And what it's just showing you is the survivability establishment potential on the left column, whether it's highly likely they'll establish or very low. And they made this table for both adults and for the juveniles. And so all these parameters in calcium fit. Clear Lake has high calcium. We definitely would be a nice house for them. Salinity, we have less than two salinity, so again, high. They do, however, can withstand some higher salinity for a couple hours. And then the temperature range is exactly what we get, and they've been seen in frozen areas. And then they're in the Amazon, so they like warm water also, which we also have here in Clear Lake. What I did want to show you specifically and point out is the constant salinity on the left, which can range from two to five for high to low survivability, and the variable salinity, which means a flash. So just dunking something in saltwater for a couple hours, if it's up to 23 parts per trillion for saltwater is not going to be susceptible to make these guys susceptible. So again, here's that map I showed on the left, which is the golden mussel current detections we have from fish and wildlife. This is a salinity map of the Delta on the right. So there are some areas here within the Delta closer to the bay that are very high in salinity. So we're not expecting there to be potential there for them to live. But you can see areas that are well within the range for the salinity of these. So it's just really, again, to hone in on the wide area of the aquatic zone down there in the Delta where these guys can potentially spread. The black dots in the map on the right are not mussels. Those are Delta smelling locations. It's just for the map purposes. So some good news, what we know. They are sensitive to hot water. So any decontamination practices that we employ, right here on the right, you can see some ramp monitors are deconning a pontoon. So one guy will hold a hot water wand, and then somebody else will have a little temperature gauge they hold over the water to make sure the water is reaching the temperature that'll kill them at 120 degrees Fahrenheit. They can desiccate within 10 days. So the messaging for clean, drain, dry your boat is still very important practice that we still are going to be communicating to everybody. And then there is some sensitivity to low oxygen environments based on some lab experiments and some field observations. Unfortunately, Clear Lake gets really low dissolved oxygen in the summer. We get some zones in the, in the lower arm, the upper, or the lower arm and the oaks arm that get depleted of oxygen. That's why we have some cyanobacteria issues. Unfortunately, those conditions might have a negative effect on golden mussels if they're introduced and established there. They do have some sun sensitivity, so they like shadier water areas. So on the part of your dock, that's, you know, a couple feet down, that's where you would probably see them versus right up on the, on the top closer to the sun. This makes it harder to detect, however, if we have some, you know, substrates in the water. We're trying to check to see if they're colonizing. They have to be pretty submerged in the water. And some fish and crabs like to eat them. One of the species that likes them is common carp, which we have a lot in Clear Lake. We're trying to get rid of them. But here you see this invasive beneficial relationship with two invasives. We do not have golden mussels in Lake County right now. Here's our technician Cory going out and sampling. We have substrates, so these square plates around the lake. There's about 16 locations. Every month, we sample them, we scrape them off, we clean them, we note anything that's on there. And we do not have any mussels on any of the plates. So we're going to keep vigilant on monitoring these plates, maybe increase the monitoring as we go into the winter season with this new threat of golden mussels. And so, so far, so good for that. We do other monthly monitoring. We look at shorelines, we look at rocks, we look at buoy lines. We go out and pull up the lines, we look at the line. Those are prime places where these mussels can establish and settle. Don't have any mussels there yet. CDFW is developing a protocol to do microscopy, infrared imaging for the villagers or the juveniles of the golden mussels. They do not have it developed yet. We are still collecting samples and sending it to them. And so they'll be able to detect if there's juveniles in water bodies. They do that now for zebra Quaga mussels.
Can I pause you for one question?
Yeah.
If you can go back to the previous slide, just to make sure that we talk about the zebra mussel villagers. On, that, that is just a sample picture.
Yes.
What it would look like if we found any.
Yeah. So the villagers, you can't see them to the naked eye. They're microscopic. And they require a special dye and imaging to be seen. And so there's a certain, there's a special lab in Bodega Bay that we send our samples to. And they're able to do that procedure for us and let us know if there's any juveniles in the lake. So they're developing that specific for golden mussels because they have a different juvenile. So they have to get those juveniles first, put them on the slide, and test what dyes and imaging will work to see them. So the image here is just showing what zebra mussel villagers look like. Golden mussel villagers look pretty similar, but yeah. Did that answer the?
It was more to make the statement because the headline on the slide is we don't have golden mussels.
Right.
But we also don't have, we don't have any.
We don't have any mussels. That is correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. I wouldn't keep that to myself. I'd make sure and share that news. Okay, so what we don't know, we don't know the impact to North American freshwater lakes, freshwater ecosystems, North American fish. We have no idea. So it's not like we're going blind because we have information from Amazon and we can go forward with what we know about other invasive impacts. And we can take precautionary measures, but that is an unknown. We don't know exactly right now what the federal's and the state's control treatment or management strategy plan is. They're starting to have a task force. They're starting to form committees. And they're, they're starting to include the golden mussel in some of their regulatory framework. So we don't know yet what their management strategy plan is going to be. If it's going to be really hard and strict, or if it's going to be kind of a rollout. We don't know when and if an emergency declaration will occur from the state. Personally, that would be really helpful for us because we can get more access to funds. There'd be clear processes. We feel supported. We have resources. But we don't know if this is going to warrant an emergency declaration on that level or not. And I'm just being honest with you as an invasive species manager of these are the things I'm thinking about as I'm planning the next few months. We don't know if the Delta will even be regulated like current Quaga zebra mussel water bodies in Southern California. So right now, if a water body in Southern California has invasive Quaga zebra mussels detected, and they have to go through a rigorous process to determine if this, there are mussels there that are present, then they're required to have decon inspections when, decontamination inspections when boats leave that lake. So boats can either be deconned, or they can get a seal. So that boat now is basically tagged, so it can't go into another water body. And we don't know if that'll be put in place for the Delta. The Delta is huge. So that would be a big lift. And we don't know yet what the direction's going to be for that. We don't know if there's going to be other closures imposed or quarantines. So currently, Lake Hennessy is closed temporarily. They're not letting any boats launch. New Malinas is closed. Lake Beresza has strictly regulated the ramps. And they have a 30-day quarantine, so a boat can come, get a tag, come back in 30 days. Or they can schedule and get a decontamination. But right now, they're booked out through February, March for decontamination. So you might as well just get your 30-day quarantine tag. Comanche Reservoir temporarily closed. They might reopen with similar quarantines. These reservoirs don't necessarily have decontaminations on site. So that's something that's going to have to be, if that's an option, they're going to have to figure out how to do that. So what, as a manager of Clear Lake, I look at this and I get worried because if boats can't go to these other nearby water bodies, but they want to go fishing, they want to go wakeboarding, where are they going to go? To a lake that's open? And that, right now, is Clear Lake. So is that increasing boating pressure on Clear Lake, potentially? This is.
Super quick question. What's a quarantine look like? Like they park the boat off, off-site and it's monitored for 30?
They put a tag on it. So they put a little tag. It's like a seal. It goes around the trailer and the boat. And so if the boat is launched off the trailer, the tag is broken. And it can never be reformed. So then we know that boat went into a water body or is not safe to launch. So they need to keep their boat on their trailer for 30 days, out of water and dried. And then we know that it's safe to go in the water. So someone that lives on Beresza and has a boat, they're going to do a quarantine because after that, they can put their boat, you know, if they live in that area. So this is what we think. And this is probably more on the personal level of what I think, but this is water resource kind of perspective. A general blanket ramp closure right now, I don't think will prevent a golden mussel introduction just because our lake is so large. And if you take the Certified Tourism Ambassador Training, this is one of the test questions. How many boat access points are there in Clear Lake? And there's 749 of non-public and public access points. So if we tried to close the lake, it would close public ramps. And what that would do is just force boat traffic to bypass any of those ramps to other access points. And that therefore would also bypass any screening inspection or decontamination that we have currently in place. And in my opinion, will increase the probability of introduction. It could generally reduce boating traffic overall, so you might see less boats coming here. But you might see more of the boat traffic, again, going into other access points and not getting screened that way. And the goal of the prevention program has always been, since 2006, is make it easy, fast, and affordable. So boats can get screened, inspected, decontaminated pretty quickly. So they're more likely to do it again. They're more likely to tell their friends. They're more likely to participate in the program, make it really easy, a clear pathway for them to comply versus putting up a lot of resistance and boat and barriers. And then they take, you know, they go around those barriers, which we saw during the drought. So here's an example of a boater just finding a little beach and putting their boat in. You know, we had ramps that were closed for the drought. They found a way to get their boat in. During COVID, we shut down the lake. We still had boating activity out there. People were still coming here. And because we have so many ramps, it's really, and access points, it's really hard to regulate that. But we do need some swift upgrades to our invasive mussel prevention program in general. And we really need some financial, technical help to do that and do it in a way that makes sense that will actually prevent these mussels from getting into the lake. Example, the state and local laws and ordinances are all written specifically for Quaga zebra mussels. So it's actually, there's no legal framework for me to comply or to enforce golden mussel prevention because we don't have an ordinance that, that states that. And I provided a copy here of my ordinance and highlighted, it literally says descended mussels like Quaga and zebra mussels throughout the whole document. This is the same at the state, too. So they're taking actions to update their legal framework to include golden mussels, so they have abilities to enforce actions and put in management measures. Another example, we have some specific plans for mussel prevention and management and response. They're all specific to Quaga zebra mussels. So these are going to be updated. The plan on the left is available on our website. So that's the Lake County Quaga zebra mussel prevention plan. That was due to be updated this year anyways. I had plans to update it. It's been five years since 2019 when I last updated it. So this is the perfect timing to do that. But it does take a lot of time and research and resources for me to be able to do that. And then we just were in the final, final stage of preparing our Clear Lake Integrated Preparedness Resilience Plan for descended mussels. So in case we got mussels in the lake or Quaga mussels, what would we do? What would be our steps? How would we implement ICS and emergency measures? And so this was all written with Quaga and zebra mussels in mind. We're very grateful that our contractors on this have decided to help us out pro bono and update this for golden mussels. So we're really, really grateful. A protected Clear Lake is a protected Western US, and they recognize that. And they're willing to help us and put in the work and do that for this document and for the plans for us. So what we all, what we have done so far is we've created, released press release, fact sheets. We've created and shared posts online. We've collaborated with regional partners. I've had some in-person meetings with some of the Tahoe folks at a conference and been on the phone and meetings with the Beresza Solano County Water Agency folks. We've been, I text with the mussel dogs all the time. So mussel dogs are canine sniffing dogs, or mussel sniffing canines. So mussel dogs are canine sniffing dogs, or mussel sniffing canines. All canines, I guess, canines. Anyways, they got some golden mussels and they're going to be trained in about a week officially. I think, actually, they got certified yesterday. So all their mussels on staff can now sniff out adult golden mussels. So we have mussel dogs here. They're going to be able to sniff out any boats with adult golden mussels on them. They're working on juveniles. They have to get some isolated juveniles and DNA of golden mussels. And then they can train them on that. But they're a pretty, pretty quick study and they're amazing. And we did attend the Fish and Wildlife or the California Department Fish and Wildlife Golden Mussel Task Force meeting. And then Clear Lake, along with some regional water body managers are joined, are part of the CDFW Regional Partners Subcommittee. So we can really communicate straight with the state managers about things that are concerning us, what we need, and how we can go forward with this. What else we've done is we've increased some screening, inspection, and decontamination requirements for visiting boaters from the delta. I'm sure all my ramp monitors here can, can attest to that. They've had to work a little bit more this time of year to make sure these boats are safe. But we do have limited staff and annual hours make this difficult. So our ramp monitor staff is all part-time staff at 900 hours a year. And usually around Thanksgiving through March, they get some time off. There's some limited hours, but it's the off-season. So we do some, some decons inspections, but we don't get a whole lot of boat traffic. And it's been really difficult because if they work more now, doing decons now, that means come April, May, June, they have less hours to work. And that's when we're going to get a lot more boat traffic, too. So I'm really having a hard time struggling with how to make sure I have enough staff time to respond right now to these boats coming from the delta and then also planning for the next six months. We did submit a CAN grant to admin for emergency stopgap program funding. And so I sent a proposal to Stephen and talking with him about those funds that we need and talked, provided it to our supervisor, Pawan Pudde, about what this program needs right now to start putting some things in place to kind of prepare for golden mussel prevention and any management that's needed.
And just as a clarification, CAN grant is the cannabis grants that we've been providing through cannabis tax dollars that we've collected?
Yep, thank you for that, for clarifying. I acronym, yes, please ask me on the acronyms. I love my acronyms. And that is, well, I'll talk about it. We did add the Golden Mussel website that I talked about. So if you go to our website, the tab on the left at the bottom, we have new Golden Mussel website. And the slides today are part of their, a part of this website under Resources and Links. Clicky click, okay. So our ask today for the board is to, we don't have any letters today, but we will probably be in the process of writing some letters of requests or recommendations or comment letters to the state or other partner agencies or groups as we move forward with trying to figure out how we prevent and manage golden mussels. And so we're just asking you that, to be aware of that, coming on the periphery. We might ask a review and approve some letters on behalf of the county of Lake in order for us to best limit spread, raise awareness, and cooperate with regional water bodies and have maybe direct ask from the state. Again, the, we submitted a CAN grant. So if you could support them in your budget requests for that grant, that stopgap fund for this program, I have a slide next that'll actually show the table. So I don't have to go through all of these. But the original intent of the grand, of the CAN grants was to protect water quality, environmental needs. And we strongly feel this request meets that charge. But just know that, to date, we haven't received, we, for quagga mussel prevention programs and mussel prevention programs, it's all been grant-funded or funded by our local mussel sticker funds. And so we haven't come yet to the board or the general fund to request any funds or resources to maintain this program to date. And the intent would still to be going forward, applying for grants. Proposition four has been passed. There's a lot of money there. I would not be surprised if the state allocates a significant part of that to do golden mussel response and prevention. And we're going to work really hard to get our, our cut of that. So we're, we're not going to ignore grants outside of the county from now on. This is just to help us provide some, some stability in our planning as we go forward to, to manage this issue. So we have some funds in there for our internal project management. We could spread those costs over some other grants. We are asking for another full-time position allocation to help us particularly with doing decons on, you know, when our ramp monitors are on the ramps inspecting boats. We need decontamination support. We need somebody that's available full-time to go around the lake and provide support for our vendors and our staff. We have to continue monitoring. We really want to get signs, billboards out on the highways for people coming on the highways traveling Clear Lake. They know what's expected with the local sticker prevention and mussel prevention program. And these signs are really darn expensive. So that's what that 50,000 cost is there for that line item, as well as producing other education supplies and materials that are right now all based on quagga zebra mussel. We have had talks with a consulting firm that does treatments on invasive mussels and invasive plants to kind of get their perspective on, on what it would take to kind of start investigating some treatments, potential treatments, particularly because we have so many drinking water systems on the lake. If we find mussels in one area and there's a treatment option for a chemical that's already allowed to be used in California and has been used on our lake for other uses, if that's an effective method, then that's something we want to have ready to go and know if it'll work. So I've kind of talked with those conversations and have some labs that I'm going to contact. But we need a little bit of matching contribution to be able to really put something on the table if that's something we're interested in. And of course, we'd work with partners such as like special districts or other water purveyors to make sure those treatments would be usable in a drinking water system. And that is part of the prevention plan for quagga mussels, too. And then continue mussel dogs inspection services. And then one thing that we wanted to do, and we've talked it over with public services, or, yeah, public services and parks, is the new park out there by the roundabout on Highway 20, Highway 53, is a great place for a permanent decontamination station. So any boats coming into the county can get deconned. And then they're safe to, to launch anywhere in Clear Lake. And so we need to start planning and permitting for something like that and what that would entail. And so that's, that line item is in there, is, is there for. And this would be just so remarkable to have, to have this facility there. And so we just need some resources to investigate and start those planning processes. So what can the public do? Get your boat screened and sticker up. Even if you're going anywhere near the delta, just go through the process again. If you're a resident, if you're a visitor. We put stickers on either side of the boat and on the trailer. Anybody can see if the, if the stickers are current. So the year stickers will have the current year on there. 2025 stickers have already gone out. And then they'll have a month sticker on there with a little blue and white seal. And if you're coming from the delta and you just want to be proactive, you can call us ahead and we can schedule your decontamination so you can get inspected or deconned and on the lake quickly. And then we just really encourage everybody to be aware of golden mussels and zebra, of course, still quagga zebra mussels, their impact on Clear Lake. And we do, are probably going to embark on some sort of community outreach tour. I'll go around to community groups and talk about this, about golden mussels. I have the Clear Lake Bass Master scheduled in January. So that's on the table. We require, we really ask everybody follow signage at every water body and coming to the county. You can see the sign on the bottom left. This is some of our new signs that posted on Highway 20 as you're coming into Clear Lake Oaks area. And then to clean drain dry every time, all the time, every water body. And if you think you see a golden mussel, even if you're not sure, let us come out and help you. We'll take a sample of it, we'll take photos. You can call us at 707-263-2344. Leave a message at Facebook at Lake County Water. You can email us, just get ahold of us. We'll make it real easy. We love to come out and look at whatever you got on your shoreline or your boat and making sure it's not a golden mussel or a zebra quagga mussel. So the next steps, all of this depends on funding, but this is what I'm focused on, is I want to support my ramp staff because they are the ones right now keeping our lake free of golden mussels. So whatever I can do to support them, I want to be here for that. And then we need to update our legal framework right away to include golden mussel. Even if this maybe includes increases in citation fines as a deterrent. I have to talk with the sheriff's office, talk with the board, talk with legal counsel and see how this can be worked out, if this is something that's amenable. And then, of course, we're going to continue conducting inspections and decontaminations of the delta boats. I underline as best we can because we're not going to be able to decon every single delta boat that comes into Clear Lake. That's just the reality, as much as I hate it. We're trying our darn best. Continuing communication cooperation with state regional partners, really establishing those relationships with our partners and making sure we're all on the same page. So as a region, we're very strong against this, this potential threat. I'm always looking for funding options. It's really hard. I can't apply to state grants if in their directives they don't list the golden mussel as something that would be eligible. And so we have to kind of wait for that top-down effect to happen from the state. And some notes on that. So right now, I've reached out to my state grants. Because their language specifically specifies quagga zebra mussels, they will not accept anything we bill that's work under golden mussels. So if I have a tournament that's coming from the delta and all my ramp monitors need to do some extra inspections and decons, those times, that money is internally, is at an internal cost. We can't bill our grants because they legally can't pay for that because it's not for zebra quagga mussel. They are kind of working to remedy this. So there's a board meeting, or there's a Fish and Game Commission meeting on December 12th, where the, CDFW is specifically going to ask for emergency package that will include golden mussels in state language. I don't know how that'll trickle down to all the grants, but we're hoping that's the start. And so we are running out of internal funding sources. We do have some sticker revenue or sticker revenue. It's not that much. I know one of the first things we might think about is, well, let's increase sticker prices. And I would caution that we really need to consider and discuss that because if you make it harder, again, for a boater to come here and there's a barrier and now they have to pay $50 sticker costs, they might go find some other ramp and just drop their boat into the lake. And we might miss that opportunity to screen them, inspect them. So we have known we need to increase sticker prices, but we just have to consider the timing with that. These are the references for all the research that I've done so far in quagga mussel. A lot of these resources are based on the Amazon infestation. And with that, I'll take any questions. I apologize for the length of this, but I really think it was important to share what I knew with the board and with the public about this issue.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I want to make sure and check in with Director Borre if you wanted to add anything, any concerns.
Well, naturally, we would be concerned with, you know, any of these getting into our intake systems and into our water supplies. I know that, you know, that a large amount of the purveyors around pull water out of the lake. So if these become invasive and we get into the water system, they will impact the efficiency of being able to pull it out and whatever we need to put into the water to make sure that the larva and everything else is killed.
And we saw on one of the slides, up to $20,000 a day to try and flush these out through operation and maintenance of the infrastructure. So that's not something we want to look at, increase costs. Appreciate the presentation. What I really appreciate is that we're always proactive in trying to keep these mussels out of the lake and not reactive. Not sure if that's the only reason why we don't have any in the lake, but it's appreciated, all the staff that we have here that do all the work at the ramps, checking in on boats, making sure that they're stickered up. If we do nothing, that would be foolish of us, especially the impact that it would have, not just on the infrastructure, but our overall economy as we speak. And so I always appreciate seeing you guys out there, making sure that people are following the rules and appreciate the overall water resources perspective on being ahead of this rather than being behind it. Any comments, questions? Supervisor Pyska.
Equal parts thorough and terrifying. Thank you, Angela.
Sorry, not sorry?
I know. Well, I've been waiting for this presentation because I've been seeing it out there. And, you know, I appreciate you bringing all this information to us. So it sounds like to be as proactive as we have been and we want to continue to be because honestly, anything we do upfront is a fraction of what we have to spend to deal with it. If we, if we have the infestation and then have to quarantine and do all the work on our infrastructure. So it sounds like this gap from the state with the lack of emergency language, grant availability, we're going to have to front-load some of these asks. And so are you bringing this to us? Are you thinking at mid-year budget or? Okay, so that's when we can expect to have a more thorough understanding. I do see someone walking around.
Just the person I wanted to see about that.
Okay. Okay, good to know. So that gives us some time for staff to look at that and admin to look over.
Mr. Carter, did you want to speak right now?
I've been talking with Stephen about it nonstop, like since a couple days ago, so.
Stephen Carter, Assistant County Minister of Officer. We have looked at the specific policy section where water resources is for cannabis tax. There is enough funding in the current year to take care of the, the request that Water Resources has. With the position in there, I'm not so sure about the ongoing for subsequent years. Hopefully, grants take over by then. So we have already affirmed that the, the money is there. And I would, I would like to know if your board is amenable to this or not because mid-year budget isn't till the first week in February. But with the current budget Water Resources has, they can budget transfer around and do some of the activities now. And then as soon as mid-year gets finalized, we transfer the cannabis dollars to, to cover it. If your board is not amenable, we'll wait and not do anything until that time period.
I would suggest we bring this back as an item to continue and discuss and potentially finalize sooner than later. I, I don't think this is a waiting game. This is an action game. Looking for, you have consensus. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you for the very thorough and yes, very terrifying presentation, but our last presentation was kind of scary too. So lock and load, people. Let's look out for those muscles. Just a question for staff and county council. I'm looking at our current water vessel inspection program ordinance. It looks like it's pretty well-written and covers not just the dress knit muscles, Quagga and zebra, but any other aquatic, non-native invasive species. So provided our fine inspectors get some training on golden muscles and stuff like that, the way I'm reading it, we have full authorization under our current ordinance to take any proactive measures needed to combat this on the ramps, but I could be wrong. And the reason I'm thinking out loud on that is if we do get close to needing an emergency proc, you know, do we have to wait for the actual infestation? Can we be proactive on that? Are we going to wait for the state to do things? The way I read this, and again, I'm looking forward to staff review of this and county council, is I think our ordinance is strong enough, the way it was written, to authorize action on this now. But if it isn't strong enough, if we need to bake in some specific authorization to the golden muscles and an emergency proc would help us do that, to enforce that regulation because it isn't in here, I guess we would need that analysis sooner than later because to the scary part, if we do need an emergency proc to beef up the enforcement in this ordinance, let's talk about that. But if this ordinance, as it stands right now, is strong enough to give you that flexibility, then maybe we can wait and see what the state's going to do before we bake a, a local emergency. Does that make sense? You don't have to answer yes, but that was my question. Is our current ordinance strong enough that if we get training to our nice ramp monitors, we can totally use the existing authorization of this ordinance and the stickers and the tags and the fees and all that to, to move ahead?
Yeah, we'll do a, I'm going to work with county council and do a thorough dive to make sure that's covered. There is a, the ordinance, and then there's another reference, a part of the ordinance, another part of the county code. So I just want to make sure we're covered. And we also, and the state has told me, but we also function on the intent of that ordinance. And so we're responding now based on the intent of that ordinance. But yeah, I need to work with county council. If it's something like just going through and changing from descended to other invasive muscles, that line throughout the ordinance, that's a pretty easy fix if that's enough to, to address us. But if we want to do something with citation limits or powers, that's something that I want to work with county council. What would be the best thing if we're going to change the ordinance and go through that process of public review and board approval? I want to make sure I have everything right in there. So thanks for that comment, Supervisor Green, and I will be reaching out to county council to help me do that. Okay? Smiled and nodded.
So what, I'm making some assumptions. This is starting out in the delta and the delta has some, while slow, very important projects that the state of California is working on, very controversial as well. But even as of this morning, they're looking to start embedding some pipelines, getting 140 million out of the $20 billion project to make water go into, towards Southern California. That tells me that either A, that might cancel that project, or B, there's no way you can cancel that project and they're going to have to figure out what to do with those muscles. So I'm hoping that that means that generates a lot of interest from the state of California to wanting to do something to try to eliminate the problem before it gets out of control, more so than it is at this moment, or just that there will be some funding to try and control these things. I'm hoping the delta project helps us out from the state perspective. We just did a grand jury report on the, not the ramp monitoring, but the, the fees. And in looking at that, that line item that was there, I didn't really see too many fines. And you were talking about maybe we need to increase the fines. Maybe we need to increase the enforcement of putting out the fines because I, I'm guessing that if we catch somebody without a sticker, we say, hey, go back and get a sticker or something like that. And we want to get people to meet compliance rather than hitting them with fines. And I don't know what that might look like, but I just know when I looked at those line items, there was very minimal and I'm like, I know we're catching more than just what's there. And so maybe we need to take a harder stance to wanting to keep our, our lake clean, especially if you're in the lake and you're found without stickers. At that point, I don't know that there should even be a choice. If you're in the lake, you, you are putting others and our infrastructure potentially in danger. So I'd like to see how we can maybe enhance that enforcement by using what we already have on the books. The last, if you can explain again, and I apologize for forgetting the specifics, on December 12th, there is a California Department of Fish and Wildlife meeting that's happening that they're, that, what are they looking to do to add the golden muscle to the list of species so that that can help you utilize your grants or access grants? Can you kind of help me remember?
Yeah, and what I included in my slide, at slide 32, is the copy and paste from the Fish and Wildlife Task Force meeting. I didn't want to get anything incorrect in there. So the current California Fish and Wildlife code doesn't even list golden muscles as a restricted species. So at the state level, they also have no authority in their legislative, in their legal framework to be able to start a program for golden muscle prevention or dedicate funds or list it on, put it on watch list. So they're putting to the, they put together emergency package. It's all available online if you go to the Fish and Wildlife Commission for the next meeting on December 12th and you go down to the, their agenda item, the whole package is there of what they're asking and the language updates they're requesting in the Fish and Wildlife Code. So then that the golden muscle is now considered a restricted species. I don't know if this will trickle to other language in the legislative angles and specific grant projects or grant programs. I think they all have to do that separately. I don't know if that's a, that's a like one stop. It's the first step for Fish and Wildlife because like right now, they can't even give authority to their own staff to go out and do management. They're doing monitoring, but that's what they recognize as the first step.
It might be the first domino for everything else.
Yeah, it'll help set it up. Personally, I would really like if they just go to the governor and ask for a emergency declaration at this point, particularly the item you brought up about the delta project and in the Amazon, these muscles spread by sand being moved from areas. So we know that there's a lot of dredging in the delta for those, those water projects. And any of that can contain a bunch of golden muscles that are then moved around the state. We also don't know the full extent because if it wasn't on the restricted list, was Fish and Wildlife monitoring it? Was the Department of Water Resources monitoring for them around the entire state and all of their water project? We don't even know that. So we're still waiting for the extent of this. And I don't know if Fish and Wildlife is waiting for that to see, I guess, to be blunt, is it worth it? Or, you know, what their next step would be based on the full extent of it. So I hope that answered your question. And if anybody wants to make comments at the Fish and Game Commission meeting, that's December 12th for that.
And what, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I know that we've been working a lot, especially in the Blue Ribbon Committee with Eric Scolar, and he has been the president of Fish and Wildlife. Is he still on the board?
I think so. I think he's a chair, but I'm not 100% sure, but.
That's what I'm thinking. I just haven't updated to see if anything has changed. And I'm just looking for, I think we need to reach out to Mr. Scolar, let him know our concern and let him know the importance of what Fish and Wildlife will be discussing and to ensure that they start off that first domino to start getting the, the support that we're looking for from the state level. And so I'm, I'm looking for board consensus for one of us to reach out to Eric Scolar.
The Blue Ribbon Committee meets Monday at a quarterly meeting, so if that's where we can approach him for this.
But the meeting's on December 12th, which would be two days from now, which would be Thursday. And I think as somebody who interacts with them quite often, especially through the Blue Ribbon Committee, if it's possible to reach out to them and just let them know our concern. If that's not possible, I'm happy to do that as well and let them know.
And let me know if you need anything from me to write up or anything to make it easier or faster. Okay? Yeah, okay.
And is there consensus from the board to go ahead and do that? Okay, I think we use our, our relationships that we have and since he's working always hand in hand here in Lake County, let's make sure to communicate with him. Concerning, glad there's nothing here at this moment in time. But thank you very much. I always appreciate the reports. You're, you don't hide things, you don't skirt around things. We need to know what's going on and we need to know how best to handle the situation that we have, so.
No time to lose.
Yeah, I'm going to start off with, okay. Supervisor Green?
To, to your point, I see lots of, again, in the ordinance, I see lots of enforcement goodies in there, everything from summary abatement to impounding boats, administrative penalties and all that. But I don't recall, you know, if it was an administrative penalty, that'd be a code enforcement thing. I see the sheriff has some authority in here to do misdemeanor enforcement. So there's a wide range of enforcement in here, including in administrative citations. What I don't know is Water Resources' current capacity to impose any of those penalties.
We do. Yes, we issue administrative citations.
You do?
Mm-hmm. And pretty much all of them have been paid or upheld by the board.
And that's using Water, these staff?
Uh, no, it's myself, my technician or the director.
Okay.
Technically other coordinators too in department, yeah.
All right. So how's that work in real life? If they flag a boat, they have to put a call in to you or Poone and say, come on out and do a citation?
Yep, and the ordinance language and the citation also gives us power to send a citation if the boat's not present in front of us. So if, what usually happens, and we had a couple boats a few weeks ago, is if there's a boat that, a trailer in the parking lot that launched a boat and there's no stickers on the trailer and they have warning, they've gotten warnings, we have a record of that or they have a warning card and they don't have a current sticker, we can send them a citation. If they just didn't put the current sticker on their trailer, but they have the paperwork, they send it back with their citation, I rip it up because it means they went through the process. But that doesn't happen that often. Usually if they get a citation from not having a sticker. My ramp monitors are really thorough. They're there. A lot of these guys live in the area. They know the boats that come and go. They know who the boats are. They know if there's a boat from out of town. Also, if it's a risk boat, you know, where it's from, if it doesn't come up in the database at all, there's also a part in the database to put in trailer information too.
So at this point, it's to the extent there's any enforcement, it's all sites, all the time, admin sites, and we aren't pursuing those other enforcement options.
Marine Patrol can also cite boats on the lake. And that is one thing that I need to, we have a new sheriff. I need to have conversations with him. Our Marine Patrol staff has been trained and they're, you know, they're also limited in staff, so they don't have guys out there looking at every single boat, particularly during the off-season, but they do issue citations. The state parks is really, they love giving citations out, it seems like, because they're really thorough, I guess is a nice way to say that. Sorry.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, appreciate the report and obviously a lot's happened since I spoke with you a little bit about this issue on the first day, so. So thank you very much for that. But what I was going to say today is, you know, in the report there, you know, they were saying there's some work needs to be done, some other things, there is no funding. I'd like to commit out of my discretionary funds and work with admin to do that, $20,000 to help any stopgaps while the board has a chance to bring it back and address something in the budget or the state makes some changes. It's real important. We always talk about it, the lake is one of our most valuable assets, needs to be protected. So I'm going to work with admin and hopefully get you some funds. I don't, I'm telling you how to spend it, but you guys can figure that out. But hopefully it can help with the stopgap in the meantime, so I'd like to be able to do that.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Simon. We're supposed to be giving you a goodbye, going away gift, but thank you so much for that. We appreciate it and we'll talk with admin and I'll talk with my staff on best way to utilize that right now.
And I'll, I'll make one final comment before opening up for public comment. I know that I've already, I know you're working on it, working with property owners, but we do have a lot of signage throughout the county entrances, but a lot of those signs are slowly fading, either falling apart. So I think that's important work to make sure that that signage remains so that as people enter into the communities, that they're, they're being hit with those signs. So.
Caltrans encroachment permits take a long time. Expect a letter from me at some point asking the board to ask Fish and Wildlife to enter a cooperative agreement with Caltrans or do something. So when there's invasive species signage, it can just be put up with a notification and not having to go through the standard like month, month encroachment permit process review. That would be just foreshadowing. But thanks for bringing that up.
Let's, let's work on that. Let's work on that. All right, let's open it up for public comment. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Please come on up to the microphone, please, or raise your hand in Zoom.
You mentioned training. I want to congratulate Angela and Corey. We go through an extensive training program on invasive species, not only muscle, but plant life and snails. We cover pretty much everything that's out there and we're trained to look for it. That's all I had to say.
What was your name for the record, please?
Frank Levings, L-E-V-I-N-G-S.
Thank you, Frank. Any other comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. We've already given consensus to go ahead and bring back that can grant proposal as soon as possible. And one of us, it looks like Vice Chair Crandall, might be the one to reach out to Eric Scolar, the potential chair of the Fish and Wildlife, let them know our concerns and what we would like to get from the state. And.
Just one last, as long as you're here, it's very rare when I can get you all in the same room. Thank you so much for your hard work, freezing out there, baking out there. You are the front lines and I've seen you out there on the front lines. It ain't all hunky-dory some days, so I appreciate you all very much.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, and with that, we're going to go ahead and close down this item. Really appreciate the report, looking forward to more discussions.
Thank you so much, board. Thank you, county council.